Good evening, this is the August 18, 2015 regular meeting of the Bernards Township Planning Board. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law of 1975, notice of this meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Bernards was posted on the bulletin board in the reception hall of the municipal building, Collier Lane, Basking Ridge, New Jersey, was sent to the Burnsville News, Burnsville, New Jersey, to the Courier News, Bridgewater, New Jersey, on January 12, 2015, and was electronically mailed to all those people who have requested individual notice. The following procedure has been adopted by the Bernards Township Planning Board. There will be no new cases heard after 10:00 PM and no new witnesses or testimony will be heard after 10:30 PM. Fran, roll call please.
I do not see -- yes, I do, I'm sorry, now I do see Ms. Alper. My apologies. Ms. Alper?
Yes, here, President.
Sorry, Mr. Calucci?
Here.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Ms. Kleiner told us in advance she would not be here. Mr. Malley?
Here.
I do not see Ms. Pavlini. Ms. Pedici?
Here.
And Mr. Santoro?
Here.
Ms. Axe told us she would not be here. Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Blazza?
Here. All right, I believe we're expecting Ms. Pavlini, so if we could just have a motion as to Ms. Axe to Ms. Kleiner?
So that they be excused, Mr. Chair?
Second. Thank you, Ms. Pedici. Is it Mayor Malley? Thank you, Mayor Malley. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes, aye.
All opposed? Hearing none, the motion's carried. The minutes will so reflect the absences as being excused, please Fran. Next item on the agenda is the approval of charges against escrow accounts, and tonight we are focusing only on that of Vanish Associates, April and May 2015. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the charges against escrow of Vanish and Associates.
Thank you, Ms. Alper. Is there a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Santoro. Any discussion on that motion? Okay. Seeing none, Fran, roll call.
Ms. Alper?
Yes.
Ms. Calucci?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Ms. Pedici?
Yes.
Mr. Santoro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Blazza?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the Bell Christopher and C.C. Edwards. I'll read the full citation, but before I do, if anyone happens to be here on the Bell C.C. Edwards matter, that matter has been adjourned at the request of the applicant, it's not going to be heard tonight. That matter's being carried to, Fran, is it the October 20th?
October 20th, and they're now going to share a meeting with Fellowship Village, and...
Okay, so it's going to be an item on the agenda that night on October 20th, there will be no further notice?
Right, and I'm just going to suggest that you put Fellowship on first, Bell on second, because, and I'm not saying this to disparage the applicant at all, but Bell now has a history, I mean, had a history before tonight, but this just continues the history of pulling off, you know, at the last minute.
And the full citation, Bell Christopher and C.C. Edwards, Developers LLC, PB 11-011, Block 7702, Lots 10 and 11, 3526 and 3536 Valley Road, Preliminary Major Subdivision, five lots.
And they requested that an announcement be made, that it be carried to October 20th without need for further notice, and I believe they also submitted to Fran in writing, an extension of the time within which the Board has to decide the application to November 30th.
Correct.
Okay, it's on the record, we're required.
Yep.
Okay, before we move on to the next agenda item, are there members that will be leaving us?
Yes.
Mr. Malley, Mr. Calucci? Anyone else?
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris.
Mr. Harris, thank you all.
Have a nice evening.
Have a good evening. Next item on the agenda is Islamic Society of Basking Ridge, Inc., PB 12-001, Block 9301, Lot 2, 124 Church Street, Preliminary and Final Site Plan Approval. Do you have the statements?
Yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Raymar.
She's sitting here, you're just sitting here.
We are continuing with the public comment section of that application. Before we resume the public comment, we are going to have a reading of a statement that's been read at most of the meetings concerning the format.
Actually, all of them except the last hearing session, but only Mr. Quick, you know, presented there, and he knew the statement.
Okay, so we're going to ask Ms. Alper to please read the statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the continuation of the hearing on the Islamic Society of Basking Ridge, application for construction of a mosque on Block 9301, Lot 2, known as 124 Church Street, and tonight we are in the portion of the hearing, or the continued portion of the hearing, which is known as the public comment portion. For the public's benefit, so that everyone will understand a little bit about the process, the Board has rules that apply to the manner in which the Planning Board is required to proceed, and previously, as you know, the applicant, the Islamic Society, presented its evidence and testimony, which was then followed by the objectors' evidence and testimony through objectors' attorney, Mr. Simon. This is now the third portion of the hearing, known as the public comment portion. There's a rule that applies to this, which states that after the applicant's presentation and then the objectors' presentation, which have both taken place, portions of the hearing, the Board shall thereafter recognize public comments by interested parties, provided that those making comments are sworn and each such interested party is subject to cross-examination and questioning. So the way this will proceed is that we will recognize anybody who wants to make a public comment. You will then be sworn and you will testify to the facts which you believe are relevant to the application, whether you're in favor of it or against it, or just have comments that you want the Board to consider in deliberating on the application. And once you make those statements, you will then be subject to cross-examination. Also, the Board rules state that the Board may exclude irrelevant, immaterial, unduly repetitious evidence and/or disorderly testimony. We urge everybody to please be respectful of each other, everybody has a voice, the purpose of this is so that the Board can hear what is on the public's mind that's relevant relating to the application, so that we can fairly consider what's before us. Please, it is not helpful to us for people to either cheer or clap or make negative comments about anything that's being said. We must consider the evidence, we must consider the facts within the law that constrains us, and people's emotional sentiments will not help us come to that conclusion. So we do ask that everybody please be respectful, and you will be heard if you want to be. All the statements that are provided to the Board, as I stated, must be sworn testimony, and that testimony, as well as any exhibits which members of the public offer, must be relevant and material in order that the Board allows it into evidence. The reason that we make this point is that because there were previous rulings relating to the application, which many of you have heard before, the Board previously ruled on two issues, the first related to traffic on Church Street and the second related to sewer capacity and hookups. What we have ruled is that neither of those issues is within our jurisdiction, the Board will not consider any testimony or exhibits on the issues of traffic on Church Street and sewer capacity hookups, because they're irrelevant and immaterial as a result of being outside of our jurisdiction. That does not mean that they're irrelevant or immaterial to other agencies considering the application or other aspects of the application, but this Board cannot consider those issues in the application for site plan approval, which is pending before the Board. We urge the public to avoid introducing any irrelevant or immaterial testimony or exhibits, because the result will be objections from the applicant's counsel, which will have the effect of interrupting the flow of the public's presentations. Members of the public are of course entitled to submit any comments, exhibits, or evidence to the proper forums regarding the two issues which we've just mentioned, the Church Street traffic and the sewer issues. The Church Street traffic issue is before the County Planning Board, and the sewer hookup issue will be before the Bernards Township Sewerage Authority and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. So you will have an opportunity to address those issues before those two agencies or organizations, but if any comments are addressed to them in this forum, we will be unable to consider them. The Board's rules are on the township website, so you can download them, and the citation of the particular rule that we've been referring to is Rule 2:2-3-F, like Frank, and it's under the section captioned Order of Presentation. Another rule that applies is 2:2-9, which is captioned Evidence and Exhibits, and referring to two sentences, the Board must follow case law precedent as to admission of evidence in administrative proceedings. And the last sentence of Rule 2:2-9 states that the Board may exclude irrelevant, immaterial, unduly repetitious evidence, like this statement, and disorderly testimony. Fran is going to put a pad of paper on the table, Fran, Ms. Florio, our secretary, and we ask that when the Chair recognizes you to come up, that you please write your name and address on the pad, as that will make Ms. Florio's job and the Board's job easier in preparing minutes, and if we ever want to refer to what someone said, the spelling of the names and addresses is very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alper. Okay, Mr. Simon.
As some of the professionals over the Board are aware, there was some email exchanges today, beginning at approximately 11:30 AM, that went to the issue of the commencement of tonight's hearing, and particularly the start time. I believe that the public should be made aware of the context of those emails back and forth, and I, the reason why I'm up in particular, is that Mr. Drill...
Mr. Simon?
Yes?
You really do need to have that thing turned on.
How's that?
Sorry about that. You sounded better.
Okay. Again, Rob Simon from Herald Law, as some of the Board professionals are aware, there was some email exchanges earlier today, beginning at approximately 11:30 in the morning, that went to the issue of the start time of this evening's hearing, and the fact that the Bell application was apparently, as of 11:30 this morning, or maybe even thereafter, put off, and how that impacted the start time of this evening's hearing. I believe that the public should be made aware of the context of those emails, and in particular, the reason why I'm up right now, is that Mr. Drill is part of that email exchange, and one of his responses stated that I direct Fran to make this part of the record, and then I provided an email response to that, and I want to make sure that email response, feel free to comment on it, is also made part of the record.
Well, has it been printed out and put in the record? What's the date, well, it's today's date, what was the time of the email you're referencing?
The time of the email I'm referencing is 1:42 PM on today's date, Tuesday, August 18, 2015.
And that was an email from you, addressed primarily to whom?
It was for me, to Mr. Drill, copied to Mr. Raymar, Ms. Chowdhury, and Ms. Florio.
Okay, so Fran, you can identify the email, or you're aware of the email that Mr. Simon's referencing?
Yes, I am.
Okay, has it already been printed out and put in the file?
Yes, but I did not bring that part of the file with me.
But it's in the file?
Yes.
Okay, so done.
It's the last word email, I didn't want to respond to it, let's have the last word and put it in the file, as long as it's all part of the record.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Simon. Okay, we are still in the public comment portion, if any member of the public wishes to be heard on this application, please come forward at this time. And again, you just have to write your name and address, and then we'll ask you to state it for the record, we won't ask you to do it simultaneously.
This is still on?
Yep.
Okay, you're on, Fran.
All you have to do is make certain you're pretty close to it, and sometimes what's easier is to just hold it, unless you have something else, but...
Like this?
Yeah.
Is this good?
Yes. Oh, perfect.
I have a pretty loud voice, but I'm not sure. Okay. My name is Linda Arnold, I live at 75 Church Street, Liberty Corner.
Okay, can you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the comments and testimony that you will give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, to help you, God?
I do. All right. I'm adding my voice to the opposition of this proposal. After the last meeting, some of my neighbors and I agreed that an arborist was still needed to present expert commentary concerning the trees on the 124 Church Street property. I have a very brief PowerPoint to review the pertinent ordinances and definitions, and then our expert would like to comment further, and I was wondering if Mrs. Quick could come up and help me with the PowerPoint, she's very good at this.
Okay. The last time this happened, it has to do with which provider you're using, and at the same time, I was told this last time, Ms. Sabo, who's the Township Clerk, told me that hers was on, so it may be a problem with the cable company. You know, my apologies, and I don't, I don't live in town, so I don't know which one is which.
Are we recording now?
Oh, yeah, we're recording, I mean, and...
Ms. Arnold?
Yes.
I just want to be clear, do you, you have an expert witness you're going to be calling?
I do.
Okay, so in your presentation, you're not going to cover the same things that your expert's going to cover, correct? You're going to, if you're, if you're calling somebody to provide expert testimony as to tree issues, then don't testify as to what they're going to tell us, just, when you, when you have that witness testify, they'll tell us, okay?
Yes.
Just to, for the sake of efficiency, thanks.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. Okay. The eastern buffer has been and continues to be a significant focus of discussion. Recall that last year, the applicant proposed to move the driveway out of the eastern buffer, which caused it to expand the eastern detention basin. What was once a significant intrusion into the buffer has become an even more offensive land use and gutted the buffer to the point it can no longer function as such, and is in violation of the Township ordinance. As a reminder, I show on the screen the applicable ordinances in buffering and screening.
Could you hold up one second, let's go back to the first page of this PowerPoint, for identification for the record, so you have a PowerPoint up on the screen, it says ISBR Public Comment, August 18, 2015, and your name, Linda Arnold, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And is this PowerPoint, does this have the same information that Mr. Quick's?
No.
Or Mrs. Quick's PowerPoint had on it?
Terms of the ordinance?
In the ordinances, yes.
Okay, so these are the same slides, but these ordinance are the same slides, and she has different, other different slides, or is the information moved around?
Yeah, this isn't on my slide, I didn't do buffer definition.
Okay. Section 21-3, definition of buffer. Concerns with eastern buffer shall mean a strip of land of specified width containing natural woodlands, earth bounds, or other planted screening material, and separating one kind of land use from another, or separating a planned development from any other form of development. Section 21-43.4 buffering. Landscaping of required buffers and screening shall take into account the opportunities presented by existing site features. Screening, where required, shall be achieved by fencing, earth forms, and plantings, applied singly or in combination as necessary. Landscaping used for buffering purposes shall be compatible in scale and character with the surrounding prevailing landscape, and project features that shall be designed as part of the overall landscaping plan. Where required elsewhere in this chapter, this is Section 21-28.1 screening. Visual screen shall be provided through landscaping or other means as approved by the Board. Such screen shall be designed and constructed in such a manner as to provide a solid barrier obstructing the view of the area to be screened on a year-round basis. All screen shall be shown on the landscape plan. The definitions above stress the landscaping aspects of the buffer and the screen. Removing trees from the buffer is not consistent with the purpose of the buffer it's meant to serve. Once again, it is clear from the definition of the buffer that landscaping is the means by which incompatible land uses are separated. At the last meeting, Mr. Quick began a discussion regarding compromises that are being proposed in the eastern buffer. As Mr. Quick pointed out in his presentation, it is quite clear that the proposed large detention basin is causing a significant loss of area that is landscaped and can be used to meet the requirements for a buffer. Also, it is evident that new additional deficiencies are present in the plan. For instance, large trees are located in the proposed swell and are not indicated to be removed. Large trees, not even on the plans, are located in the detention basin and the swell. Trees and shrubs proposed for planting along the eastern property line within the canopies of the trees. In order to help the Planning Board better understand these issues and concerns, this is a slide of the trees, I'd like to present Bill Runman, a New Jersey Certified Tree Expert of Organic Plant Care's LLC, to walk through each of the concerns on the eastern property line, after which I'll have a concluding slide. Mr. Runman?
I object.
Mr. Basis?
This presentation violates the Board's 2015 rules concerning the presentation of witnesses. Those rules, 2:2-3-E, says the Board shall first recognize presentations of counsel for objectors, and those presentations involving expert testimony, and then the Board shall thereafter recognize any presentations by the public, and then the applicant may thereafter present rebuttal evidence, and then comes the public comment period. And the reason for those rules is, as has happened throughout these proceedings, is if there's an expert or testimony presented in order, the applicant might or might not revise the plans to take account of whatever it is that the expert presented. So without even making an application for an exception to the rules, they're trying to present an expert out of turn, and the rules don't permit experts in the public count comment period.
I think as you indicate...
When was the first thing acted on this?
Well, I know, but I, and again, I don't get the final say on this, but I have to make the preliminary decision, so that's what I'm going to do, relative to your objection. I'm inclined to overrule the objection, because throughout the course of this application, which I think everyone involved would agree is not a typical application, in terms of both the length, the number of proceedings, the issues that have been presented with experts, both in favor of the application and on behalf of objectors, it was certainly my belief that when members of the public were indicating a desire to make certain points and perhaps to call their own witnesses, that that was going to be done at this phase of the hearing. So I think while you might have a technical argument to make based on a very strict interpretation of our rules, I think under the circumstances, we would have the ability to relax those rules, to avoid unfairly imparting prejudice on the public, which I think, you know, inadvertently, if at all, but through the, these comments of this Board during the time when I was Chair and when I wasn't Chair, that gave the impression that there would be this opportunity, that certainly would in no way, Mr. Raymar, limit the applicant's ability to offer rebuttal to any such witness that might be offered at this time. While certainly the very strict adherence to the rule that you cited would make for an optimally efficient application, again, under what has to be considered the extraordinary circumstances of this application, I think the relaxation makes sense, and is really in the interest of fairness for all concerned. So for those reasons, I, I'm overruling the objection, and now I'll ask the Board if they wish to make a motion to reverse. Okay, so then, that is the rule, that's the ruling. The applicant will tell me, I think at this point, based on the way we've been proceeding, at the completion of public comment, which will include the presentation of any experts, the applicant will have the right to present whatever rebuttal evidence it would want to, and an appropriate time would be given for that reason, for that purpose.
Mr. Chair.
Mrs. Santoro?
Another question on how we're handling an expert witness, since it will be different than the ones we heard before public comment. What's your thought on having the public question and an expert witness?
An expert witness, this is not a public comment, so an expert witness is absolutely subject to cross-examination by everybody.
So the same, same rules that we've had in the beginning?
Absolutely.
That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and so anyway, can you please spell your last name?
Yes. It's William Grunman, G.R.U.N.D.M.A.N.N.
And what is the area of expertise that you're going to ask the Board to qualify you as before they're going to allow you to testify?
Well, I've been asked to come here as an expert in arboriculture.
In arboriculture?
In arboriculture.
And can you define for some of us that might not know what that is, what is arboriculture?
Arboriculture is the care and maintenance of shade trees, ornamental trees.
Is it only the care and maintenance of shade trees and ornamental trees?
Shrubs, shrubbery. You know, how to properly plant trees, how to properly maintain trees.
Okay, now, I am not going to qualify you, because I represent the Board, so...
Well, before, Mr. Raymar, any questions on qualification?
I asked you, heard it.
Right. You're going to have to qualify yourself, so explain to the Board why you're an expert.
Sure, can we help her? All right, so, you know, I was asked to come here.
We don't need to know why, let's do this, give us the benefit of your, first, your educational background.
Okay, first of all, I'm a, I have a Bachelor of Science in Forestry from SUNY, College of Environmental Science and Forestry, in Syracuse, and I'm a New Jersey Certified Tree Expert, number 310. And I'm also an approved New Jersey forester. I've been in the business for 35 years, in all capacities.
And who's your current employer?
Myself.
Okay, do you have a name for your business?
I have, yep, I own Organic Plant Care LLC.
And where's that located?
We're in French Town, New Jersey.
And what does Organic Plant Care LLC do, what's their business?
Well, we're arborists, you know, we maintain shade and ornamental trees.
Private property, public property?
Mostly residential, you know, private. We do some municipal work, colleges, commercial.
Any municipal clients or colleges you can tell us?
RVCC. Yeah, we take care of Trump National Golf Course. We don't do their lawn, we take care of their trees.
Right.
So we do all organic stuff.
Have you ever been qualified as an expert by any other municipal board, court, anything?
Um, yes.
Okay, in what context have you previously been qualified as an expert?
I have been qualified as an expert witness in a malicious tree removal case in Morris And literally two weeks from now, I am an expert witness in a trip and fall case in Flemington.
Does it relate to a tree root?
Yes, as a matter of fact, it relates to uplifted sidewalks.
And you've provided expert reports in that case?
Yes.
And you've, you're, it's anticipated you're going to testify trial?
It's definite.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Any... Any other questions from the board as to qualifications? Mr. Santoro?
Yes, have you testified at this board before or other boards for Burnetstownship?
Never.
And any neighboring communities?
Just the ones I mentioned.
Yeah, you mentioned Morristown, so that's close, okay.
Yeah, that's true.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Raymar, any questions on qualifications?
No.
Mr. Simon, any questions on qualifications?
No, thank you.
Any questions from any member of the public as to qualifications of this expert? Seeing none? Okay, sir, you're accepted by this board as an expert in the field of, is it arborism? Am I saying?
Arboriculture.
Arboriculture.
Tree expert.
Tree expert. You are a tree expert, sir.
I am.
Proceed.
So, I visited the site last Friday, and I have a summary of my findings.
That's in this PowerPoint?
Part of it, yes.
Okay.
Do you want a copy of it?
Why don't you?
Why don't you take us through it?
Okay. So, on Friday, the 14th of August, I looked at specific trees along the eastern border of 124 Church Street, viewed from the western border of Christopher Quick's property at 114 Church Street, Liberty Corner, New Jersey. The purpose of the visit was to identify and verify the quantity, species, condition, and location of the trees and their proximity to the proposed eastern swale and drainage basin to be constructed at 124 Church Street. I examined individual trees and clumps of trees numbered one through 12 as overlaid. That's only partial overlay there. I don't know how to make, I guess we'll get back to that.
Do you want to help him with the PowerPoint?
Well, we got one through four here. All right, so that's one through, that's one through 12. And I'll talk more about that in a minute. Yeah. Thank you. I examined the trees and clumps of trees numbered one through 12 as overlaid on the applicant sheet C dash 06, Vehicular Circulation and Landscape Plan dated September 19th, 2014. These mixed species of trees consisting of ash, oak, maple, pine, cedar are of average quality and condition. However, their location is important because they provide a natural screening buffer between the two properties. In review, it was determined that two of the trees not included on the site plan and two other identified on the site plan are located directly in the proposed swale and not identified as removal candidates, as were trees 10, 11, and 12. So, those trees is, that tree in question is number four, and that tree's right here. And that's the tree that is, it's a 22-inch diameter native red maple with a 24-foot crown, and it's located directly in the middle of the swale and needs to be marked for removal. There's no indication the plan calls for the removal of this tree. So, this tree is literally dead center in the swale.
You're saying that tree should be added to the list of trees?
That tree should be added to the list of removals. You know, as trees were, 10, 11, and 12 were indicated for removal. The other trees as depicted on the site, on the plan are accurately placed. Their short and long-term survival and structural stability of the trees not removed will be determined by the distance and proximity to the proposed swale and detention basin. Most tree roots exist within the first 12 inches of soil depth under the live crown and extend out beyond the drip line. The drip line of a tree can be depicted by dropping an imaginary line from the outer leaves to the ground. This is the area that we call the critical, you know, zone, root zone. Root abbreviation, soil compaction, and great changes in this critical root zone must be avoided in order to preserve the health, the tree health and structural stability. The USDA Forest Service and the International Society of Arboriculture both provide a rule of thumb when determining distance excavation should be restricted in order to protect tree roots. The Forest Service dictates one and a half times the diameter converted to feet. In other words, under the USDA's rule, a 10-inch diameter tree needs a 15-foot radius or a 30-foot circle of protection. To avoid maximum root protect, to afford maximum root protection, some arborists recommend the exclusion zone extend an additional 20, an additional 10 to 20% beyond the drip line of the live crown, and then installing a non-disturbance fence. The fence isolates the area from machines and worker trespass. Soil compaction is another problem in an excavation site. When heavy equipment is allowed to run over the critical root zone, the soil structure is altered. The soil structure refers to the arrangement of soil particles separated into units called aggregates. Soil aggregates possess solids and pore space. Pore space contain air and water, and when the soil is compacted, trees starve for oxygen and the roots can't grow and develop normally. And over time, the trees lose vigor and become stressed and predisposed to insect and pathogens and ultimately die. You know, we've all witnessed the decline in death of trees after building a house on a wooded lot. The act of clearing the site and installing lawn contributes and causes soil compaction. A common problem we see in excavation sites on wooded sites are grade changes. You know, changes of grade will seriously disturb the delicate relationship between roots and surrounding soil. This results in root mortality, decline in vigor, and frequently, tree death. Lowering the grade causes root destruction, reduces water and nutrient absorption capacity of the tree and structural integrity, leaving to wind throw and increased storm damage potential. Raising the grade near trees essentially suffocates the roots. The extent of tree damage depends largely on the depth of the fill and the soil type. The deeper the fill, the more extensive the root destruction will be. Certain trees are very sensitive to even small amounts of fill. If more than a few inches of fill must be placed over tree roots, a well and drainage system should be installed. Another area of concern is the installation of the stockade and rail fence and landscape screening plants on the property line. It appears in the drawing that a portion of the fence and posts, and there's no mention of the size of the holes to be dug to accommodate the posts, and plant installation will be located next to the existing property line and border, and border screening trees. The act of digging holes for the fence posts and installing the screening trees will lead to unavoidable root damage and soil compaction. In some cases, the proposed installation of the new arborvitae, and these, these are the western arborvitae that are proposed for the screening in this buffer zone, they're extremely susceptible to deer browsing, which will limit the screening and buffering capabilities long-term. These arborvitae will be situated directly underneath the crowns of existing trees. Arborvitae are shade intolerant and will not do well long-term in the shade. Crowns become spindly and thin and eventually lose their screening potential. The other problem is root competition from the existing trees, making it difficult for the arborvitae to become established. In addition, over time, they will most likely decline from the lack of consistent watering. Takes two to three years of weekly watering for a tree to become established. In this location where there is already a tremendous amount of root competition from the native trees, the arborvitae will not survive. So, I'd just like to go through one through 12 here on the screen and, you know, explain, you know, each, each issue with each tree. So, the first tree, number one, you know, that's on the, that's on the southern border of the, of the property, and there's really no issue with this tree. It's at the edge of the swale detention basin where, you know, a little bit of root abbreviation will take place. Tree two and three, they're 12 and 11-inch diameter.
You got a question?
I'm sorry. I did have a question. When you go through the trees, you had stated earlier that the condition was fair, which I assume is an average. Do you have the data to tell us when you go through each tree, the type of tree it is and the condition of that tree? Instead of repeating it afterwards, when you go through the numbers, I think it'd be more appropriate to tell us as you walk through all 12.
Okay, well...
What tree it is and the condition it is in today.
What's that?
Hey, you can't, it's got to be part of the rec.
Yeah.
The reference was to the location of the tree on the south side of the property. I think that's the north side. You might want to clarify that in his testimony.
Jason to the road.
Correct.
That's the north side.
So, can you go through the tree numbers according to Mr. Santoro's suggestion?
Okay, explain to me again, Raymar.
I want you to identify the tree by species, by height.
Okay.
And condition.
And condition. Correct. And then explain, you were going to start talking about whether there will be a problem with that tree.
Okay, so this is a, this is a white ash.
Number one.
Number one.
Thanks.
You know, it's a young tree, you know, approximately 25, 30 feet tall. It's in average condition, given that it's next to the road, you know, with all the salt spray and...
And it's an ash.
And the other, the other issue is an ash. You know, it's going to die, you know, with the Emerald Ash Bore.
Hey, it will die regardless of this development, you're saying?
No, this, yes, yeah. The location of this tree, really relative to the swale and the detention basin is not an issue.
Okay, got it.
There's a tree that was depicted on this, on this overlay. Tree two and three are respect, respectfully, or respective, number two is a 12-inch diameter tree, and number three is an 11-inch diameter pin oak. They're both pin oaks.
Pin oaks.
And they're located closer to the property line away from the swale. They're young trees, vigorous trees, you know, approximately, you know, 20, 25 foot tall. Minimal root abbreviation, perhaps 10% of the root system will be affected as it reaches into the swale area.
And the condition, I know that you said they're young and you said they were...
Yeah, they're average-conditioned trees.
Well, he did, but that's what I'm asking. Is average vigorous?
For a young tree, yes. The plan calls for the installation of eight arborvitae along the property line, and four of these arborvitae are planted directly underneath the crown of these pin So, there's a, there's an issue there with shade and competition.
So, just to clarify for me, are you saying that planting the eight arborvitae underneath these two trees is bad for the arborvitae or bad for these two trees or both?
Both.
Okay, so can you explain why that is?
Well, okay, actually, there's, there's only four of the eight planted directly underneath the crowns of these trees.
Okay.
So, in the act of installing trees, you know, there's, there's root abbreviation that takes place underneath this critical, you know, root zone of a tree. And so, you're, you know, you're damaging the roots, but also, so that's the issue with the pin oak, with the arborvitae. Arborvitae are shade intolerant trees, and growing underneath the crown of a, of a shade tree like that pin oak, these pin oaks, long-term, it's a conflict. And the arborvitae are, they'll lose out. So, the arborvitae lose long-term with the shade factor, and the pin oaks are disrupted from the act of planting and the soil compaction. And, okay, so tree number four is a 24, is a 22-inch diameter native red maple with a 24-foot crown, average quality, native tree, indigenous tree. And this is the tree that's located directly in the middle of the swale and needs to come out. There's no way this tree's going to survive. This tree was not marked. I believe the swale is, the dimensions of the swale are 30 inches wide by, you know, a foot deep.
So, you're saying from the plants, there would be a foot of soil above the current root layer?
No.
More than that?
It could be dug out.
No, it would be dug out.
It's going to be dug out.
This tree would be dug out.
He's saying the swale is going to be...
It's going to be in the middle of the swale.
All right, oh, so, yeah, where it is now will be air.
So, it's going to be cut, right. So, this tree's got to go.
He said, this is the tree he said should be labeled on the plan to be removed.
Yeah, and I was just trying to understand.
Correct, yep.
Why, you're saying it's removed because the soil around it is going, not because it will be buried.
It's not buried. It's not fill. It's cut. Right. So, number five is a 22-inch diameter, there you go, is a 22-inch diameter pin oak with a 14-foot crown just off the property line. And if you look at, and if you look at the, the reach of that crown, you know, that crown extends beyond the swale and into the buffer zone, and so, the act of, you know, digging that swale out's going to disrupt, you know, a portion, you know, I said approximately a third of the root system. And, you know, so, that's like, that's bad for the tree. That's not a healthy situation for the tree.
And what's...
Is that tree slated to remain?
That tree is indicated to remain, yes.
And what's the current condition of that tree?
Based on that one-third root disturbance, can you quantify the odds of survival and, you know, the duration beyond which, if you don't think it would survive, how long that would take?
You know, it's, there's no exact amount of time. You know, anytime you disrupt, you know, root systems in this critical area, you're interfering with the ability of the tree to, you know, store energy, you know, absorb water and nutrients. So, it could, you know, it could decline over, you know, a period of a year. You know, there's other issues. There's, you know, soil compaction also associated with, you know, with the, with the excavation of the soil.
Is there a percentage of root area disturbance that would typically be equated with a tree not being able to survive? Versus being compromised? I mean, you're...
Yeah, I would say that, you know, ideally, you want to stay totally outside the drip line of the tree. You know, once you start, once you start, you know, scraping away soil, you know, underneath this critical zone, critical root zone, depending on the soil type, depending on the vigor of the tree, you know, these are, these are all composite issues that, you know, that will determine whether the trees are going to, tree's going to survive or, you know, for a longer term or a shorter term.
Use that USDA recommendation you mentioned before. You said one and a half times the diameter of the tree converted to feet.
Correct.
So, use that...
Is that the ground or the diameter of the tree?
What's that?
One and a half times.
The DBH.
So, you're measuring the DBH of the tree, and that's diameter, breast height, four and a half feet off the ground.
Gotcha.
And, you know, if you have a 10-inch tree, you multiply by one and a half.
Can you do this for tree number five?
Tree number five is a 22-inch diameter tree, so it has a 14-foot crown, so 22, 32, so that'd be a 33-foot exclusion zone under the USDA rule. the USDA rule. So in other words, one, one point five, converted to feet.
How did you get to that dimension? I'm sorry, it's just not clear on how he's.
Well, it's a twenty, twenty-two inches.
Okay.
Divided by.
And you said multiplied by one and a half.
Multiplied by one and a half.
So twenty-two times one and a half is thirty-three.
Thirty-three, right.
Okay, then convert that to feet.
Thirty-three feet.
Thirty-three feet.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay, now, that's, that's the USDA recommendation, correct?
Right.
Now, before you said, if you, you said ideally, if you're gonna dig, you shouldn't dig, you should stay out of the, um, the drip line, correct?
Beyond the drip line.
Right, so what is the drip line for the tree number five?
Uh, the drip line for tree number five, uh, is thirty-one feet.
So it's about the same as the USDA recommendation?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why it wouldn't be.
All right, so what, what?
It has a fourteen foot crown.
Right, so tell us, so how do you calculate this drip line of number five? You've seen it, right? So this from memory or which one on the plan?
Both.
Okay, but you said the drip line is the outer portion of the leaves.
The drip line is the outer edge of the leaves.
Right.
Right. And, and so, you know, someone measured this as a fourteen foot crown.
Okay.
And, you know, so that would be, in a sense, the drip line.
It's a twenty-eight, fourteen times, I know it was.
No, 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 no.
No?
No. So it's a twenty-two inch diameter tree.
Yeah.
And it's squeezed and growing adjacent to other trees. So the crown of the tree, you know, is also squeezed.
Could, it would help if you could describe the crown measurement that's on the plan. Is that the same as the drip line?
Uh.
As it's measured by the, the creator of the plan?
Well, yes, it would be.
Okay, that's the current drip line according to the plan.
That would be the current drip line, right. Do the roots stop there, though? No.
But, but, okay, but you testified that ideally you shouldn't dig within the drip line or the crown.
Correct.
So the USDA recommends thirty-three feet protection area.
Mm-hmm.
The drip line in this particular case.
Fourteen.
Would be fourteen.
Correct.
Okay, I got it.
Yep. So I don't, you know, I'm not sure of the scale of this map, but tree five is into the swale. And fourteen feet or?
I had another question, I'm sorry. There's also a five A. Were you going to address that or is that not?
I am.
Okay.
Yep.
Don't wanna jump ahead.
Um, so five A is a twenty-four inch diameter pin oak with a twenty foot crown. And, you know, that tree, most of that tree is in swale and also needs to be marked for The current plan does not show it. In other words, that tree's gonna die.
The current plan does not show removal or does not show the tree?
Does not, does not show it being removed.
Oh, but the tree is on the plan.
What's that?
That, that tree is on the plan.
That tree is on the plan, yep.
Okay.
Most of the tree is right in the swale, needs to be marked for removal, plan does not show it, does not call for its removal. Okay, moving on, five B. Five B is a fourteen inch diameter native red maple with a fourteen foot crown. This tree is not on the plan at all and is mostly located in the proposed swale. This tree also needs to be marked for removal.
So what you're saying, though, is this tree first has to be added to the plan and then marked for removal?
Yes. Totally missing from the plan. Okay, and then tree five C is a twenty, twenty-five inch, twenty-five inch diameter white pine, approximately fifty feet tall, and that tree is not on the plan either.
How many feet tall did you say?
Approximately fifty. It's an open grown tree, it's right next to the existing structure.
Again, that's another one that you're saying should be added to the plan.
Added to the plan, yeah.
But added to the plan and marked for elimination or not?
Marked for elimination. This tree is located, it is located directly in the proposed eastern detention basin and needs to be marked for removal. It's right in the middle of the detention basin.
I got it.
Um, so trees six and seven, they're groups of trees, mostly eastern red cedar, indigenous trees, you know, good screening trees between the properties. And all the crowns of these trees, you know, reach into the proposed swale. And to some degree or another, you know, they'll, they'll all be negatively impacted by the, by the excavation of the swale.
And what's the crown on number six and what's the crown on number seven?
Uh, the crowns are approximately eight to ten feet. Again, they're all highly competitive trees, all squeezed together. You know, the other part of digging next to trees is not only you get into the, you know, the fine root hairs which sustain the trees, but also you get into, you know, larger anchoring roots. Now these trees are more predisposed to, you know, blowing over and storm damage, um, so that's the other factor there. And tree number eight is a twenty-five inch diameter pin oak with a twenty-four, with a twenty-one inch crown, it's approximately sixty feet tall.
Twenty-one foot crown.
Twenty-one foot crown.
How tall did you say?
Sixty feet. And it's just off the property line. It's probably the largest tree on the eastern side of the property. And using the, you know, the Forest Services formula for calculating the effective root zone, um, is thirty-seven feet, would put the reach of the roots into the swale and to the detention basin, a significant amount of root damage will occur and this tree will most likely decline. In addition, you know, the tree will be prone to wind throw due to the abbreviated root system and the shallow soil depth. And, you know, there's a lot of, there's a, you know, very, there's a shale ledge, you know, on that property, you know, very minimal topsoil. So, you know, with a disruption of the root system, you know, this tree will be extremely predisposed to wind throw.
So are you saying that, in your opinion, that tree should be marked to be eliminated or are you saying that, you're just saying that tree's gonna end up at some point?
Dead.
Dead.
Right.
But are you saying that it should be marked for elimination on that plan or not?
Uh, that tree should be marked for elimination. That tree will not survive.
So when you say tree should be marked for elimination, you're saying because it's unrealistic to expect that it's gonna survive the project?
Correct.
Okay.
But that tree is not, is on the property line? Am I seeing that correctly?
It's all, just on the prop, it's just off the property line.
So it's more in the Quicks, the Quicks, um, property than in the ISBR property?
Uh, it's more in the ISBR property, judging from the, you know, the location of the And again, we get, you know, group, uh, tree, tree nine is a group of small pines, you know, with, uh, you know, the canopy at ground level.
Those are eastern white pines?
Eastern white pines. You know, these trees are important screening plans from the Quicks deck. And they will be disturbed by the proposed plantings of the arborvitae and the erection of the six-foot tall fence within their canopies. In other words, you gotta strip at least one side off to install the, you know, the stockade fence. Um, you know, the, just minimal compatibility there.
Let me ask you this. When there's a plan that shows construction and shows trees and some are gonna be removed, in your opinion, if the tree is not gonna survive the construction, is that when you mark it to be eliminated? Or if the tree can survive construction, but in your opinion, it's eventually gonna die, are you saying you should also mark it for elimination?
From a safety standpoint?
Not from, from your.
Health, I would, you know, when you have a tree that's gonna suffer that significant amount of, of root damage, it ought to be, you know, marked for elimination.
From the get-go is what you're saying?
Yeah.
And over what, what kind of year period, for example, talking about this, um, I guess going back to number eight, the sixty-foot pin oak.
Yeah.
In your opinion, how many years will it take for that pin oak to die?
Well, again, it depends. Uh, you know, it depends on the soil type and, uh, you know, the degree of fill or cut.
Well, based on your experience seeing these sorts of.
Yeah, it could go on, you know, it could, it could decline in a year or it could go on two, three, four years.
But you don't think.
But you start to see the decli, you know, you start to see the dieback in the top of the tree, you know, the leaves getting small, you know, dead branches.
So you don't think the tree would those survive more than five years? And the reason I ask five years, well, do you think the tree will survive five years?
No.
And the reason I ask five years is a lot of times when boards are looking at planting and to get them to a certain height, a lot of boards, as a rule of thumb, use a five in growing, a five-year growing period.
Right.
Do you have any, uh, growing period that you use as a rule of thumb?
No.
So whatever height you wanted, in your opinion, you should plant it at, at the height that you want at the time of planting and not have any growing period?
Yeah, if you have a tree that's, you know, ultimately gonna die.
No, I'm not talking about trees that are gonna die now. Say the arborvitae's, the trees that are proposed.
Right.
What height are they proposed at?
The arborvitae?
Yeah.
Uh, six, eight feet.
Do you know what they're proposed to be planted at and then in five years, how high they would grow to, assuming that they would grow because they wouldn't be in the shade?
Um, you know, arborvitae's are not quick growers. You know, they might take on over a five-year period, you know, two feet of growth.
And then if the trees were eliminated that are now shown to be there, which, again, what your testimony is, the arborvitae, planting the arborvitae's and putting in a fence are gonna harm the existing trees, putting, leaving these existing trees would create shade and have the arborvitae have a hard time growing.
Right.
If you took the trees out, if you eliminated them like you're suggesting to the board, what impact would that have on the arborvitae's that would be planted?
Well, they'd, they'd grow with little competition.
Okay. All right, so you finished nine. You said that was gonna be disturbed by the arborvitae's and the fence.
Yeah, the white pines, correct.
Right, you would, again, I assume, but I don't wanna assume, you're suggesting that those be marked for elimination?
Uh, no, I would leave them there. You know, I would, I would.
So you would.
Vastly favor those trees, yeah. Yeah, they, they provide some nice screening from the deck.
But is, is that your, your propos, your suggested solution here in order to maintain those trees is to move the fence so the fence wouldn't interfere with the tree?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And then you have, uh, tree ten, eleven, and twelve. Those are all legitimately marked for removal. They're sitting in the middle of the detention basin.
So.
So, you know, I guess.
I'm missing something. Of all twelve trees then, what you're saying is the only, every single tree, number one through twelve, other than tree nine, should be marked for elimination in your opinion?
Um, they're all gonna be disrupted and in my opinion, you know, you're gonna see major problems with those trees down the road.
Right, so should they all be marked for elimination or not?
Uh, yes.
And nine doesn't need to be marked for elimination so long as the fence is moved away from it, is that your testimony?
Right.
And how far away does it need to be moved, the fence?
Well, outside the drip line of the tree.
Well, for that group nine, what are we talking about? What's the calculation to your best estimate?
Like a ten-foot canopy, yeah, probably five, six, eight feet.
So move the fence five to six feet away because the drip line is ten feet and obviously it's five feet on the side of the tree, correct?
You need more clarification?
I hate to ask it, but I didn't hear a species for number ten to twelve.
You can't hear what you're saying, Fran.
I didn't hear a species for number ten to twelve.
Uh, species for.
But that's because those are marked to be removed.
Yeah, it was a pin oak, a crab apple. And I'm not absolutely sure of the other ones. I think it was a cherry.
Thank you.
I do have a question.
Is that, is that the completion of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so a question for the board members, Mr. Santoro?
Yes, you, you mentioned the conflict with the arborvitae. What's an alternative screening tree or shrub that would do better than arborvitae?
Well, one, that would be more shade tolerant, like a hemlock.
Okay.
But then you got, you know, deer love hemlock, so now you're like spraying deer repellent and trying to keep the needles on the tree.
Do you have another suggestion?
Uh, you know, maybe some, uh, you know, more shade tolerant leather leaf viburnums. Certain viburnums do better in shade.
And they're, they're evergreen, so they would provide.
They're relatively evergreen, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they'll keep their leaves throughout the year. And the deer are not as prone to devouring them.
Okay, thank you.
You come up with a list of different, different trees, but I think, you know, that the issue was the height, you know, and providing that, that screening height, and that's where the arborvitae are commonly used.
So you could plant it as a taller tree or the other ones you mentioned?
Yeah, they're more shrub-like, more multi-stem-like.
And would they grow to that height or they're shorter?
Uh, you know, if you let them grow, yeah, they'll, they'll get up there, you know, ten, twelve feet.
But you don't typically plant them at the same height?
No, you see them little plants.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Um, do you, are you familiar with what's called the green giant arborvitae?
I am.
We've been specifying those on site plans out of my office because we've been told and we've seen some indication that they are a lot less.
They are.
Prone to deer.
True.
I don't know if they share the same shade intolerance that you.
Arborvitae's are all shade intolerant.
Okay, so they're, they're not.
But they are deer, less deer, they are more deer resistant.
Right, but it's not an, it's not an applicable tree for this, you're saying, because of the shade intolerance.
Yeah, any evergreen is not gonna do well in shade. You know, they're gonna get, over time, they're just gonna let go away. You know, they get spindly and thin and, and the other issue is the root competition, you know, amongst all these other trees that are established, these indigenous trees. It's gonna be really tough to get these arborvitae's to take hold, or any tree, any screening plant.
I would say, well, I, I would have to, I mean, I'm not an arborist and I would, but I would have to disagree with that because in my yard, in my house, we have evergreens. We, we were, we were taking our Christmas trees, our boldroot Christmas trees, and we were planting them in the yard along my driveway, and I live in a very heavily wooded lot. And those white pines are doing great. Matter of fact, they're growing a little bit too wide, I was surprised, but they don't seem to be having any trouble as an understory tree. So I didn't know if that's a hard and fast rule that every, all evergreens are, don't do well as understory, because that doesn't seem to be my experience, my personal experience.
It's true. Yeah, the only, the only evergreen that'll do well is a hemlock.
In a shady environment.
Yeah, I mean, these trees will survive. You know, these white pines will get spindly. I mean, I can't, are you saying that they're like, you know, the crown is like, you know, super dense and thick?
No, they became, they're like fat and squat.
Well, that's what, they'll start growing out.
Yes, that's exactly what happened.
Yeah, but that's still, you know, they, you know, they become very thin and spindly.
Okay.
In my opinion. I mean, I, I see it every day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board members with questions? Mr. Hagan?
My apologies, because you may have already said this, but what are we supposed to take away from what you've been saying?
Well, I think the major thing is about this site plan, you know, the western border and the, you know, the trees. Um, you know, there's a lot of detail that went into this.
Western border or eastern border?
The western of the Quicks, I think you.
The western of the Quicks.
Okay.
Um, you know, there's so much detail on this. Um, you know, there's so much detail on this, on this site plan. To have, you know, two trees missing totally, you know, from the plan, is, I don't understand how that could have happened, for one.
But is that the main takeaway? He, the board member wants to know what, the point, I thought your point was-
Well, that is a takeaway for me.
I thought your point was that, I mean, I'll tell you what.
Well, I got several points. That was one point. Um, you know, then the other point was, you know, there's, you know, there's ten, eleven, and twelve that are marked, properly marked for removal, you know, in the detention basin, but, you know, tree, you know, four and five A are right in the middle of the swale, and they're not marked for removal. So, you know, there's just some inaccuracies and inconsistencies, in my opinion. Uh, and the other takeaway is, um, you just can't start digging roots, you can't start abbreviating root systems, you know, and expect these trees to survive. You know, just, it's, it's, you know, I see it all the time, you know, it's a-
Can I, 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 can you step back just a, you know, five steps, not physically, but five steps, and just, you know, whether they marked them or didn't mark them, and I grant you that there could be some deficiency in the plan by not, by not including, but that's not an over, that's not an overarching point.
Well, he may think it is, and I tried to-
No, I, but-
But also-
It's an important point because the tree wasn't there. And you pointed out other trees that, you know, are not adequately protected. But what are you trying to tell us? Why, why is this important?
Uh, why is it important? I think that, uh, you know, when you, you know, make a proposal like this, you want it as accurate as possible, as, as feasible, right?
But are you trying to tell us that it's gonna cut down on the shade, or is it gonna disturb the, the visual from the quicks property? Is it going to damage something? It, that's what I'm trying to ascertain.
I think it's just inaccurate. I think, I think the, the way the trees are laid out, and the ones that are marked versus aren't marked, you know, is inconsistent. And that was the fir- that was really the first thing that stood out in my mind, was, you know, how come, you know, tree four and tree five A were, you know, slated for removal? You know, as, you know, being in the middle of the swale, and trees, you know, ten through twelve were, and they're located in the detention basin. Um, and then the other issue is, you know, for inconsistency purposes, you know, the trees that are missing. You know, the tree, you know, five B and five C just aren't on the plan at all. Um, so there's-
Okay, so now we would, we ask the applicant if they will go back and redraw this section of the plans.
Right, accurately.
Accurately, and they, and they say, yes, we will. What do we have now? Where are we?
Uh, well, you have an accurate plan, one that depicts, you know, the real, you know, story on the ground. And then, you know, the board can make a decision on now, you know, which trees realistically need to be removed, you know, these additional trees that aren't on the plan. And of course, another takeaway here is, you know, you know, the, you know, the cutting and the soil compaction that's gonna take place, you know, in the drip zones of the, you know, within the drip line of these trees.
What is this gonna, what effect will this have on the quick property? What effect will it have on the aesthetics? What effect will it have on the visuals from the quick property? Could you go into that, please?
When the trees die?
You know, maybe that's what the, um, the person who was testifying, maybe the audience is planning on doing that. Maybe she has the expert for the purpose of saying they're gonna die, and maybe that's what she wants to say. Is it, is that, was that part of the, is that the conclusion to your presentation?
I, some of it, but-
Okay, well, hold up then. You don't have to go out of turn. So let's, let's limit our questions to the expert as to the testimony given, and if that's his conclusion, if that's the offered takeaway, then we'll, we'll have to defer till we hear further from Mrs. Arnold. Do you have any other que- I don't want to cut you off, man.
No, sir.
Okay. Any other members have any questions? Mr. Raymar, any, any cross from you?
Yes. Sir, um, the PowerPoint slide five that is being projected says, um, the source is sheet C-oh-six dated September nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Is that correct?
September nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen.
That's the sheet that you viewed?
Mm-hmm.
You have to say yes.
Yes.
Did, did you view any prior iterations of the applicant's plans?
Uh, I re- I reviewed the, uh, you know, the plaits, the various plaits.
Which various plaits? May I see them?
That would be, uh, well, C-five-oh-six is actually the one that I referred to. And that is, I can't find it. There it is. C-oh-six.
What's the date on that, the last revision date on the C-oh-six that you looked at that you have in front of you right now?
Uh, this-
Pardon me, Jack. Ms. Linda Warder had a, um, and she said she wants the-
So the, you, you could, when, you can use whatever you want during your testimony, but this witness has his, okay?
So what, what sheet do you-
Ma'am, you can't interject from, from the audience only because you're not getting picked up on the record, and Mr. Raymar's cross-examining based on what this witness relied upon. So what you have is your, is irrelevant. Not, I understand what you, what you want to do, but it's just not appropriate at this time. Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, what's the- You know, the answer to the question is, uh, you know, this is plat for drawing C-dash-oh-six, um, dated September nineteenth, fourteen, two thousand and fourteen.
And so my question was, did you look at any versions of C-oh-six having a different date than September nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen?
No.
Did you, uh, listen to any of the discussions on the record of these proceedings among the applicant's professionals and the board's professionals regarding, uh, the trees, the swale, the detention, and the, uh, removal of trees?
Mr. Raymar, uh, my apologies. Don't repeat yourself, but just, just, my apologies.
Well, did you, did you get it?
We, we got it, but, but I just wanted to make sure he's aware of it.
Are, are you aware, um, that, um, the board's professionals, or at least one of them, has indicated that trees can survive up to thirty percent root loss?
I wasn't involved in that discussion, no. Do I agree with it?
I'll ask you that question. Do you agree with it?
No.
And what percentage of root loss do you believe a tree can survive?
Again, it depends on the soil condition, soil type. Not to be evasive, but, you know, you get within, you know, ten, twenty percent root loss, you know, there's, there's a good chance that you can, the tree will survive.
So ten or twenty percent root loss, the tree will survive?
Yes.
And what about twenty-five percent?
What about twenty-five percent?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know. Depends. Depends on, you know, cuts and fills and soil compaction. There's just not one factor here.
So, um, you know, when the board chair asks you the question, what percent of root disturbance will compromise the tree, is the answer to that question in excess of twenty percent?
Um, yeah, I would say there's variables, you know, there's a lot of factors that go into, you know, the survivability of a tree in a construction zone. And, uh, you know, it's just more than abbreviating the roots, you know, ten, twenty, thirty percent. You know, it's, you know, there's, you know, issues with soil compaction, you know, with grain changes. So it's just not black and white like that.
Does your firm provide services to minimize the risk of tree loss when there is, uh, construction activity in proximity to trees?
Yes.
And what services do you provide?
We install non-disturbance fences around the, around the drip line of the tree.
Okay.
To exclude people.
I'd like to object. I'm a member of the public, I'm leading the opportunity to object to the form of a question, specifically, he's asking questions that go to the witness's qualifications. He's already been qualified as an expert. He's not asking questions regarding his testimony. If you'd like, I'll offer my name and address.
Well, you should, for the record, but-
For the record, can you hear me? My name is Paul Witty, W-I-T-T-E. I live at forty-four Tuxford Terrace. I'm placing objection to Mr. Raymar's question because it goes to the qualifications of the witness as an expert, not as to the testimony he just offered.
Just a quick question. Are you representing yourself here or someone else?
I am here as a member of the public.
Okay, so you're, you're representing yourself?
Representing myself. Thank you.
The objection is overruled. The, the question was going, was eliciting expert opinion based in, or relevant to the context of the testimony that was presented by the witness, so it, it's overruled. Is there a motion to reverse? No, okay, you may continue. Did you get the, did you get an answer?
So, I don't, well, you did say you provided some services to minimize root loss and tree disturbance, and you mentioned a non-disturbance fence.
Correct.
And do you provide any other advice or services?
We do.
What other advice or services do you provide to minimize root loss and, um, in, in proximity to construction?
Well, you know, we offer services to preemptively fertilize trees, you know, to, you know, get the tree in good growing vigorous condition, you know, year, two years out before construction occurs.
Do you provide advice about the use of, uh, hand tools as opposed to, uh, caterpillars and John Deere's and the like?
Well, that would be, you know, is that realistic? You know, and-
I'm, I'm asking the question, sir.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to, uh, again, this is Paul Witty. I'd just like to, for the record, place a standing objection based on my previous objection that he is, Mr. Raymar's asking questions regarding the witness's qualifications, not regarding his testimony, with the expectation that at some point, Mr. Raymar may try to exclude the witness's testimony in that opinion, or otherwise not qualify the, the expert as-
Well, qualification doesn't, qualification as an expert doesn't insulate ultimate opinion from being deemed net opinion. So one has nothing to do with the other. I, I do understand the nature of your objection.
My objection is a standing objection.
That's fine. So you don't have to keep getting up.
I won't stand up again. Thank you.
That's, that's fine, and it's, it's, it's overruled. To the extent you have a standing objection, that objection is overruled for the reasons previously given.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So is it correct that hand digging can be used to minimize root disturbance and disturbance of trees in proximity to, um, construction?
Well, once again, it goes to, you know, how much, you know, root abbreviation are you gonna allow? You know, I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna hand dig a trench, you know, within, you know, you know, within the drip, drip line of the tree, you know, you're gonna, you're still gonna have, you know, a tree with a compromised root system. You'll have less soil compaction.
And less soil compaction is good, correct?
Less soil compaction is good.
All right, now let's go over the, the, uh, numbers of the trees again, because I'm frankly confused by your testimony, then your answer to Mr. Drill's question. With respect to tree number one.
Right.
You, your testimony is that tree isn't gonna die even if there were no development, correct?
Well, I said that because, you know, of the current issue we're having with, you know, an insect called the Amal Bash Borah.
Fine, so if you said it-
It's not a thing, it's a fact.
So it's a fact that it will die because of the insect infestation regardless of this development, correct?
It's not gonna die because of development. You know, there's minimal root loss.
Now, with respect to two and three, the pin oaks, I thought I heard you say they're average, young, and vigorous, and ten percent of the root system will be affected.
Approximately.
So since ten percent of the root system is below your twenty percent threshold, in your opinion, these two trees will survive?
Yes.
So they do not have to be marked for removal?
I never said they did.
In answer to Mr. Drill's question, the record will reflect that you did say they would. Now, which is it? Will they, do they have to be marked for removal or not?
I did not say that.
So your testimony is they do not have to be marked for removal?
They do not have to be marked for removal.
Thank you. Now, you were asked a question, again by Mr. Drill. If trees are removed, what happens to the arborvitae's planted below them?
If trees are removed?
Correct.
Their survivability goes way up.
And if their survivability goes way up, does their growth rate also go way up?
Well, now you have a tree that's, you know, growing in full sun, and they like full sun, so you're gonna have a tree that's more vigorous.
And will pro-
Putting on more, you know, more growth, more height growth.
And provide more screening?
Provide more screening, yes.
Okay, now, um, with regard to number four, you said the swale is one foot deep.
That's what your drawings show, yes.
And where do you find out on the drawing?
Why?
Why? Excuse me, sir.
I think he was thinking that thought popped out of his mouth.
I don't think he meant any offense.
I didn't mean to be disrespectful.
He didn't mean any disrespect or offense by that.
It says so here. It's, if I could find it, it's thirty feet wide, thirty inches wide by a foot deep. There's a cross-section.
And, and do you know? And do you know what, um, the change is at the point of the root of tree four?
A foot. It's right in the middle of the swale.
Okay, so now five, um, you said one-third of the root system will be disrupted?
Yeah, conservatively, yes.
And then-
Judging from the, uh, these concentric circles.
And then I believe I heard you say there's no way to quantify the percentage of survivability of this tree?
Uh, the tree's gonna most likely die, yeah. That tree will not live.
Now, with regard to trees six and seven.
They're grouping.
Yes.
Yeah.
I didn't hear you testify in your initial testimony that they should be marked for removal.
Correct.
So you did not testify that they should be marked for removal?
Right. Six and seven, I mean, those are, those are grouping of trees, you know, mostly cedar trees. And, uh, they're right on the property line. And I don't, you know, I, I would not remove those trees.
So if I heard you-
Very narrow ground.
If I heard you testify and answer to Mr. Drill's question that you thought they should be marked for removal, then I either misunderstood you or you misspoke.
I did not rec- I did not recommend the, I did not recommend the removal. I said they would be impacted.
Now, number nine, you don't believe should be marked for removal either, correct?
The small pines?
Correct.
With the canopy at ground level? No. You know, the only thing that's gonna interfere with those trees are the arborvitae and the fence.
Okay. are you aware that on a prior set of the applicant's plans, several of the trees that you say should be marked for removal were in fact marked for removal?
I'm not aware of that.
Are you aware that the swale and detention basin were on earlier plans closer to the quick property but were moved further from it?
I am aware of that.
And are you aware that one of the reasons the swale and detention basin were moved further from the quick property was to preserve more trees near that property line?
Makes sense.
And are you aware at the time of moving the detention basin and swale further from the quick property, the applicant in discussion with the board's professionals removed the marking for removal of certain of the trees that you believe should be marked for removal?
No, I wasn't aware of that.
Are you aware that the township's Tree Protection Ordinance 2145-2 does not prohibit construction activity within the drip line of trees proposed to be preserved?
Could you repeat that?
Have you looked at the township's Tree Protection Ordinance?
No.
So I take it you are not aware that the ordinance does not prohibit construction activity within the drip line of trees proposed to be preserved?
Okay.
Is it your testimony that the townfathers and mothers of Bernard's Township should have in their ordinance prohibited construction activity within the drip line of trees?
It was up to me. I wouldn't.
So you're making an argument that what is permitted by the ordinance should in fact be prohibited, correct?
Oh, as an arborist.
As an arborist?
Yeah.
Fine. Now, are you aware that the Tree Protection Ordinance permits certain grading activities within the drip lines of trees proposed to be preserved?
I'm not aware of that, but it makes sense.
Are you aware that paragraph C7 of the ordinance permits clearing within the drip line of trees if hand-operated equipment is used?
I did not read the ordinance.
So is there hand-operated equipment, i.e. a shovel, that can be used within the drip line of a tree?
Objection, for what purpose?
Can I have the microphone?
My objection goes to the purpose of the question. He asked if the, if a shovel can be used within the drip line of a tree. I'm asking for clarification as to for what purpose.
Would you be willing to rephrase, Mr. Raymar?
For any purpose. I'm just paraphrasing the ordinance. Paragraph C7 allows for clearing within the drip line of trees if hand-operated equipment is used.
Okay, who does that?
Can you answer the question?
I'm not aware of that ordinance, no.
That's not the question. He presented a question to you based on the ordinance. But if you can answer it, answer it. If you can't, say you don't know.
I'd like to, I'd like to place a different objection. Mr. Raymar is asking questions regarding the ordinance. The witness hasn't provided opinion regarding the ordinance impact. The witness has provided opinion regarding the ISBR's plan and the results of that plan on the existing foliage, not how the ordinance applies.
Okay, but the, the ordinance is certainly relevant to the board's decision-making concerning this. So it's, it's fair game to challenge the opinions of the expert relative that which is permitted by our own land use and construction ordinance.
Because that's what the board has to operate under is ordinance.
For that reason.
As I understand the question posed, it's whether or not the ordinance permits use of hand tools.
That's not what his question was.
Okay. That was the question.
Can you repeat your question?
No, no, he, that wasn't the question. That was an earlier question.
Use of hand tools would be in compliance with the ordinance.
That was an earlier question which you did not object to. The question that you just object to. Mr. Raymar, could you repeat the question, that, the pending question that he objected to?
Are you aware that the ordinance says, quote?
That's the earlier question. That's the earlier question.
I don't even know what the current question is.
I, I repeat my objection.
Okay. Overruled for the reasons already given.
Are you, I was on paragraph C7 of the ordinance.
Correct.
Are you aware that the ordinance permits clearing within the drip line or within six feet of the trunk of a tree if it's done by a hand-operated equipment?
I was not aware of that.
If hand-operated equipment were used within the drip line, do you believe that would compromise a tree?
Yes.
So you believe what is permitted by the ordinance would compromise a tree? Are you aware that the township's Tree Protection Ordinance calls for snow fencing to be installed around trees before construction commences?
I was not aware of that.
Is snow fencing similar to the protection fencing that you would recommend? When you mentioned potential soil compaction as a result of the swale and detention basin, do you know how much compaction would occur?
Well, any compaction is, is a bad thing. You know, walking underneath a tree compacts the soil. So.
So you're saying walking in, to cite your, what you referred to, the United States Forest Service's forests, damages the trees?
Sure. Millions of people walking underneath trees. Soil compaction is the number one killer of trees.
So you're, you're saying that no one should walk under any of the trees that should be preserved?
I'm not saying that. I'm saying that, you know, there's all sorts of ways you can compact soil. You know, walking in the root zone, mowing grass underneath a tree compacts the soil, heavy equipment, excavators, backhoes. You know, soil compaction is, is undesirable.
Well, you cited a U.S. Forest Service publication and certain other sources. Do any of them quantify the amount of compaction or the amount of weight that compromises a tree?
I've never read anything like that.
So is it your testimony that you, you sort of know it when you see it?
You can measure it.
How do you measure it?
With a soil compaction potentiometer.
Well, in that case, these trees might already be compacted by the quicks and their animals walking over the roots, correct?
No, I didn't see any evidence of that.
Well, did you measure it?
No.
So you don't know how much compaction has already occurred?
The compaction I'm talking about is through excavation of the swale and the detention basin.
Well, so how do we get on, into walking under trees?
Well, you asked me to quantify, you know, what does soil compaction consist of?
All right, so now that we've excluded walking under trees, how much soil compaction and by what kind of equipment are you referencing to this board?
Repeat the question?
I think I asked you whether the use of hand tools would constitute soil compaction.
No, you never, I don't recall you saying that. You know, what I inferred from that was root abbreviation.
Fair enough. All right, so what kind of activity would constitute the type of soil compaction about which you are telling this board you are concerned?
Well, to excavate the swale and the detention basin is gonna require heavy equipment. You know, backhoe is excavated. And that's gonna, that will definitely compact the soil.
Okay, and if there weren't a backhoe and an excavator within a drip line of a tree, and within the drip line, a human being with hand tools did whatever needed to be done, would that constitute the kind of compaction about which you are testifying to this board under oath that you're concerned?
No, that would be minimal compaction.
Thank you.
Using hand tools.
Did you, in reviewing the site plan, take note of any of the protections for the trees that the applicant has already proposed?
No, I did not.
Did you notice that the tree protection detail on sheet S02 depicts snow fencing around the drip line of trees to be preserved?
I did not see that.
Did you notice on sheet S01 that all state standards on soil erosion and sediment control will be followed?
I did not read that.
Did you notice from the tree removal and protection? Well, did you read the tree removal and protection note one on sheet CO6?
Uh, no, I did not.
You looked at CO6?
I did.
But you didn't look at the notes?
I looked at the swale. I looked at the location of the trees. They're relative to the, to the swale and the detention basin.
Well, in, in bold and big letters at the right, do you notice there's a tree removal and protection set of notes?
I did not know that. I did not notice that.
Well, then let me tell you that number one says all construction activity shall comply with the tree removal and protection standards of section 21-45. Any tree removal from any required buffer area shall comply with the board approval requirements of section 21-28C. The existing tree proposed to be removed is marked with an X.
Correct. As depicted on the, on this plaque.
So do you believe that if the applicant actually stays in compliance with the tree removal and protection standards of section 21-45, the applicant will mitigate interactions with trees to be preserved?
There's been no foundation laid that this witness has any idea what the full comprehensive contents of section 21-45 are. So it is unfair without laying a proper foundation and giving this witness an opportunity to review section 21-45 to offer an opinion as to whether the applicant can comply or can't comply.
Mr. Raymar, was the question limited to the notes contained on?
Yes.
The sheet that you referenced?
Yes.
Did you itemize each of those notes for the witness? I don't have it in front of me, so did you?
I just read the first note.
So I guess if you, if, in fairness to Mr. Simon, perhaps you should let the witness review the entire section of notes and then ask him that question.
Sure, I would have thought he would have done that in reviewing CO6.
Well, but he did answer that he didn't previously look at it. He wasn't aware of it, so.
That's fine.
Sir, could you look at that now? We'll take, you know what? Let's do this. We're gonna take a 10-minute recess. And except for, during the recess, sir, you, you need to look at those notes, okay? On the tree protection.
We're back on.
Okay, thank you. We're back on the record. Mr. Grunman, during the break, you had an opportunity to review that section of the sheet that had the tree protection notes.
I did.
Okay, are you now in a position to answer the question that Mr. Raymar previously asked before the break, or did he need that question restated to you?
Restate the question.
Are you aware that?
Microphone, microphone.
Tree removal and protection note one says that all construction activities shall comply with the tree removal and protection standards of section 21 dash 45.
No, I'm not aware.
And are you aware in number two, if during construction it is determined by the applicant and the township engineer that a tree designated for removal can be preserved, said tree shall be protected in accordance with township standards? Were you aware of that?
I was not aware of that.
Who hired you?
Linda Arnold.
And who is writing the check to pay you?
I'm not even sure if that's relevant at this point.
So you're not sure who's paying you?
Yes, I am. Is it relevant to the?
And who's paying you?
It's a relevant cross-examination.
It is.
Okay, Cody?
Cody Smith?
Yes.
Okay, no further questions.
Mr. Raymar, any cross, Mr. Simon, any cross-exam?
So I, I move to exclude the witness?
Good. What, on the basis?
Because Cody Smith is in flagrant violation of the board rules. He had his opportunity to speak, and now he has hired an expert to be presented by another witness.
Mr. Raymar, just like with attorneys, the person actually retaining, writing the retainer check to the attorney isn't necessarily the client. One has nothing to do with the other. He was offered by Mrs. Arnold, while you're entitled to question about whether he is being compensated, the amount of compensation, who might be writing the actual check, perhaps that goes to bias, I don't know, but in terms of who offered this witness, it's Mrs. Arnold. So if that's the basis of the objection, it's overruled.
May I object to that question too?
He already ruled on it.
It's already, sorry.
I understand.
You're sustained. I agree with you.
So?
There's no question pending. You're done. Mr. Simon, do you have cross-examination?
I did.
Okay.
Can you get, yeah, there's a microphone on that side of the podium. If you can get that microphone, if you can have it handheld, everything will be recorded.
Okay. Sir, my name is Rob Simon. I'm an attorney for an organization called Burness Township Citizens.
You've got to speak louder though.
I'm an attorney for an organization called Burness Township Citizens for Responsible Development. I just have a few questions for you, sir.
Sure.
Okay. You have not seen this site in the, in the winter or the fall, correct?
I have not.
And have you seen the sheet S dash 01 that shows the limits of disturbance on the eastern border of this property or the western border of the quick property?
No, I have not.
Okay. Would you be surprised to learn that the limits of disturbance go on sheet S dash 01 right up to the property line, along the common property line between the quick property and the ISBR property?
Judging from the?
Judging from what you have reviewed as part of this application?
Yes.
You're not surprised by that, correct?
Not surprised.
And you were, mentioned earlier that if you raise the grade, you suffocate the roots, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you lower the grade and your trees cause root destruction potentially, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you're not sure to what extent the grade is being lowered or raised in the eastern buffer, do you?
Not aware.
And the tree removal and protection note C dash 06 that Mr. Raymar showed you, you understand that those were notes that were furnished by the engineer who drafted the plans, correct?
Correct.
And Mr. Raymar asked you a couple of questions about the tree protection ordinance. You weren't consulted in the adoption of the Burness Township tree protection ordinance, were you?
No, I wasn't.
Okay. Are you aware if any certified tree expert or tree-approved New Jersey forester was consulted prior to the adoption of the tree removal ordinance in Burness Township?
No, not aware.
And with regard to the property, the trees that you've identified, one through 12, in either the red or the green, which of those trees straddle the, the common boundary line, based on your review of the plans, if any?
Tree five, eight, nine, six, seven?
Okay, of trees five, six, seven, eight, and nine, which one of those, in your professional opinion, will need to be removed as part of this development proposal, if any? So we're talking about?
Six, seven, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
So all five trees, in your opinion, will need to be removed as part of this development proposal, correct?
In violation of the, of the, of the buffer.
Well, no, I didn't ask you about the violation of the buffer. I'm just asking you that, based on your review of this application, of trees five, six, seven, eight, and nine?
Right.
That are located along the common boundary line, how many of them do you feel, in your professional opinion, will need to be removed as part of this application?
I would say two.
Which, which?
Five and eight.
Five and eight. As to, as to trees six, seven, and nine that you feel will, do not have to be removed, correct, as part of this application?
Those are, you know, those are multiple trees, you know, small crown circumference, cedar trees.
Well, do you feel?
I think they're more likely to survive.
Okay. When you say more likely to survive, you still believe that as part of the construction activities, as you can see, that those trees will be somewhat compromised?
Yes.
And by having a tree somewhat compromised, what does that mean to you? What will happen to the tree?
That means the trees are, you know, are predisposed to, you know, disease, insect issues as it becomes stressed out and less vigorous, you know, environmental factors, more prone to drought stress, more predisposed to insect and disease.
And with regard to the arbivideae that are being proposed currently by the applicant as part of this application in terms of tree planting, do you have an opinion as to how wide they can grow at maturity?
Wide?
Or even if you can approximate, how, how wide?
You know, they're very narrow crown trees typically, you know, I'd say five to six feet, four to six feet.
In width?
Yeah.
Okay. And based on the, where the applicant is proposing to plant these arbivideae, will the widths extend to the common boundary line, in your professional opinion, or?
The crown of these trees?
Correct.
Yes.
And, and will they encroach over onto the quick property?
Yes.
And for those trees to be cut back and maintained, these, these arbivideae that, because of their widths are going to extend across onto the quick property, someone would need to gain access to the quick property to perform maintenance on these trees to cut them back, correct?
Correct.
To, specifically to trim one of the sides, certainly, of the tree.
If that was an issue, yes.
But as part of regular maintenance of the tree, it would be necessary to access the quick property, correct?
Yes.
And the, some of the existing trees on the plan, they're, they're limbed with branches, correct? The plant, when you went to visit the property?
What do you mean limbed?
They have, they have tree limbs. Some of the trees have limbs, right?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the, with leaves on those limbs as well, okay?
Yes.
And, and some of them are, are below a height of six feet, correct?
Some.
Is it possible that those branches and leaves may interfere with the installation of a six-foot fence as proposed?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Raymar asked you some questions without showing you the specific tree protection ordinance. If I was to tell you that the tree protection ordinance states in part, "The first priority is to protect all trees on the site whenever possible," do you agree with that statement?
Yes.
In response to some cross-examination questions from Mr. Raymar, you stated that there were certain trees that, in fact, do not need to be removed at the present time, correct?
Correct.
But you believe that those, based on your direct examination testimony, that that those trees will still be compromised, correct?
Yes.
And by having a tree compromised, isn't it true that it may be necessary to remove one of those compromised trees within a short period of time, let's say, within- within a 5-year period, depending on how it reacts to the construction and the soil compaction-
Yes.
-and the root disturbance and the like, correct?
Correct.
I have no further questions of this witness. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Cross-examination questions from the public of this witness? Mr. Bart, you're on your way up. Come on up.
Come on up, come on up. Michael Bart, 14 Anan Road. Yeah, I apologize, I missed a portion of the early part. I had to step out. I objected to the inadequate notice. I had a commitment made this morning, but, um... Now, Mr. Raymar, he- he was referring to, I don't know how many different versions of plans, and you indicated that you hadn't read all the plans before this current one, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, and I- I don't know if you know whether the reasons for those different changes were various mistakes in the plan and whether one of the mistakes by the applicant was probably even related to the trees. I don't know if, whether- how- how relevant that is when they had mistaken plans, but, um-
Do you have a question we ask them?
But it sounds like, let me ask you if you agree. I'm just- I'm leading into the question here.
Well-
What's the objection, Mr. Raymar?
Mr. Bart was testifying to inaccuracies that have nothing to do with the question.
I'm not testifying.
Which would be schricking and he should just ask the question.
What testimony is that?
He should just ask the question.
Okay, let's- let's just move on. Could you present your next question or a question to the witness, please?
Now, I- from even Mr. Raymar's question, he indicated they had to move the swale. Now, was that to- to move the swale to save a tree and to kill other trees? Is that basically the net effect here?
If you know, if you don't know-
I don't, you know, I wasn't aware of those discussions, the proceedings that involved that, but...
Right. But he- his- so he, um, because I think your testimony here now is, and whether it's- it's still not clear from maybe what Mr. Raymar said, whether this is now the- or even what the board said, whether this is now what the final plan is. I think what you're saying is, and even what the board asked you, your understanding is the plans need to be revised now to show accurately where these- these trees are depict- are actually in place.
Yes.
And so it's your understanding, and I don't think- it sounds like what the applicant admitted as well, they had to move the swale to avoid killing trees. And so therefore, it's only logical to conclude that a swale, a tree in a swale, the tree's going to die, right?
Correct.
And so now it's your testimony here now that because they moved the swale and the plans have to be updated, that there are trees in the swale now that are going to be killed.
Correct.
Now, so... It's- is it your opinion then that if there are additional trees, well, I think it was said earlier, the purpose of these trees, right, is to provide screening according to the buffer ordinance or according to ordinance?
Correct.
And so now if additional trees that the applicant, whether it was incorrectly or just didn't get around to properly updating the plan, so now if additional trees that they haven't testified about have to be removed, it's only logical to conclude that right now there's not adequate screening under the ordinance as provided?
Yeah. You're losing the natural woodland effect of the screening buffer.
Nothing further, Mr. Jim.
Thank you, Mr. Bart. Mrs. Quick?
Mr. G, will there be a necessary alteration in the data of the tree canopy proportion based on what you're saying of the necessary removal of these trees that- that were- these trees that were both omitted from the map, the charts, and that you feel must be removed because they're in the swale or the basin? Will the canopy have to be altered, the proportion of canopy removal from the site?
Yes.
Will the loss of some of these tall trees, um, from- will the loss of some of these trees, especially a 60- some of these pinokes, 60 feet, will they detract from the coolness and shading on my lawn, especially from the late afternoon sun of the wet, coming from the west in the spring and in the summer?
Yes.
Does an arborist rate a value of a tree? And I'm just going to use an analogy for my question. There's something about killing an elephant, killing Cecil the lion, and killing a mouse. There's a difference. Is there a difference in appreciating a 60-foot pin oak and 10 arborvitae newly planted? Is there a difference in quality appreciation, value, property value rated in trees?
Yes.
What's more valuable, 10 arborvitae or a 60-foot pin oak?
A 60-foot pin oak.
For how many years will I be looking at a parking lot from my upstairs windows should trees be removed that you've mentioned?
Rephrase that, please.
For how many years, if there's to be dwarf trees or nursery trees planted in lieu of the removal of some of these large trees along the border, how many years would it be that I would be screened from seeing from my upstairs window a parking lot next door to me?
Objection.
What's the basis? Hold on, hold on. What's the basis?
There was no testimony about the screening effect, the percentage.
There were- there were-
Removal of trees.
One sec, one sec.
I'm sorry.
And there was certainly no mention about the parking lot.
There were questions as to the arboviti, how they would be impacted by the removal of the trees, how they would be impacted by the shade if the trees were not removed, their growth patterns, et cetera. So I think it's only fair to allow the question. It's overruled.
You know, there's a lot of question about, you know, the efficacy of the screening potential of those plants. You know, whether that- whether or not they're going to survive. You know, you plant 10 trees, one's going to die. That's just natural mortality. You know, arboviti, depending on, you know, the distance, you know, that, you know, the- you know, how they're planted, you know, the distance between the trees, you know, the gap they need to fill in order to, you know, to totally screen out the parking lot. You know, those are variables. I'm not sure. You're- you're talking about from your upper story?
I live up there too, upstairs.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, it'd be, I don't know if you'd ever get that screening back.
Thank you. Could a compromised tree with a damaged root system blow over and take out trees on my lawn? End up in my pool or on my house?
Yes, yes, yes.
Is that what you were talking about? Was it blow over?
Wind throw.
Wind throw.
Wind throw.
The buffer ordinances state that the least amount of trees should be removed. If they are removed, they should be replaced by nursery trees. Do you agree that, and these trees would require to be granted an exception? I'm sorry, the re- let me re- oh, lost that one, sorry. The buffer ordinance states that the least- that there should be the least amount of trees removed within the buffer, the least amount of natural trees removed in the buffer. Do you think that should the board grant an exception for the swale and the detention basin in the buffer, that would increase the removal of natural trees in the buffer by putting the swale and the basin in there?
Yeah, the swale in the detention basin is going to impact the trees and- and, uh, yeah, the trees will- will ultimately succumb and you will have no more natural woodland effect in this buffer.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mrs. Quick. Anyone else with cross-exam? Oh, come on up.
So I've got some good news for you.
You want to identify yourself?
Sorry, Doug Watson, 52, Liberty Corner Road, down the road. So I've got some good news for you. I do not expect you to be an expert on the wisdom of Berners Township ordinances. I want to talk to you as a tree expert and only as a tree expert, okay? Here's what-
We can't- you're going to have to talk to the board, they can't hear you.
Okay. I- I want to do not-
Just ask your questions.
Okay, here's my question. We previously saw, thanks to the courtesy of Mrs. Quick, I believe, a wonderful video of the row of trees between the two properties. And that is imprinted in my mind as a very beautiful and very functional in screening the two properties apart. If I do my maths and what I've heard from you today, there are 15 trees we've talked about, 1 to 12 plus 5 A, B, and C. What my notes tell me was that you, in your opinion, the life expectancy of 8 or 9 of those trees, I think it's actually 9, but I'll be careful with my 8 or 9, is less than 5 years. And it's your opinion that they should be marked for removal now, leaving about 6 or 7 of those 15 trees in the barrier. Is that fair? Is that what I heard correctly? I don't frankly consider that to be a very attractive or a very effective alternative to the screening that's there.
So you have to ask- oh, that was it? Okay. Thank you.
You agree with that?
I agree.
There you go. Mr. Quick?
Good evening, folks, again.
Just state your name for the-
Christopher Quick, 114 Church Street.
Thank you, Mr. Quick.
Come to the front of the podium. That's just like that. There you go, right there, right there.
This- this buffer area from the tree line to the end of the buffer is 50 feet wide. There is, uh, the construction activity that is proposed to take place in there is a 6-foot-wide swale and a row of new plantings and a 25-foot-wide in portions detention basin. Is there a significant root growth that will be compromised by these construction activities?
Yes.
Will it be harmful to the existing trees?
Yes.
Okay. The- the applicant could- there is technology where the applicant could get x-rays of all the roots to see how far they run and- and show them to the board if- if he thought he wasn't going to harm the trees. Is that something they do nowadays?
No.
X-ray chromatography or something?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Hey, I made that up. Sorry.
It was worth a try.
Yeah. Mr. Raymar would like to have you think that they can hand dig a swale and a detention basin in this area. The- the area in question is 18 to 24 inches deep of regular soil. And then we have a- a solid shale bottom. The- the- are the trees much more dependent on their structure and feeding roots in these first 2 feet because they can't go down into the shale, um, structure-wise mostly, I guess, and would be, uh, not as- not as competent to withstand future activities because they- they don't have deep roots?
Yes.
Okay. You- you know what shale is?
I do.
Have you ever seen anybody successfully try to break through it or dig 300-foot-deep, 25-foot-wide trench, 4 feet deep with a hand shovel or hand tools?
No.
Do you think it's even possible?
Do not.
Okay. What they didn't also tell you is that this swale, perhaps upon further examination, runs approximately 265 feet along the tree line. It is only approximately 6 feet from the trees. And it changes in elevation 2 feet from current- it changes at least 2 feet in spots from both the- the current grade in spots and then the high to low side when it affects the- the street. So we have in many places a foot, foot and a half, 2 feet that is very close to the protected root zone, if you will. And I would think that this significantly harms the- these- these roots, no matter what they try to do to save it.
It would.
Objection. There was no question in there. There was testimony by Mr. Quick-
Were you asking whether he agreed with that premise?
Yes, I was asking.
Do you agree with that premise?
Thank you.
Do you agree with the premise?
I do agree.
He did say it.
So just again, for reiteration, the- the 25-inch oak, that could well have roots that reach all the way to their proposed parking area. Is it possible for that tree to have 50-foot root?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Quick. Anyone else with cross-exam questions? Sir, come on up.
Patrick Byrne.
Just go and state your address.
100 Somerville Road. You mentioned earlier that arboviti are susceptible to deer damage?
Yes.
Would you rate on a scale of 1 to 10, are they tasty?
10 being bad?
10 being bad.
Bad, 10.
And when arboviti get eaten by deer, how do they eat- how do the deer eat arboviti? Do they eat the bottom? Or how do they, I mean, what do they-
From grade up?
Yeah.
4 or 5 feet.
And do arboviti typically recover from that?
Slow to recover. Multiple browsing will cause permanent loss of foliage.
So if you were a tree expert, you're recommending someone plant a type of tree as a screen in Basking Ridge, New Jersey? What- do we have deer in Basking Ridge, New Jersey?
I believe you do.
If you were suggesting someone plant- uh, uh, plant a tree to create a screen, would you suggest arboviti?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Eileen Fitzpatrick, 277 Mount Prospect Road. Hi. The question before from Mr. Hagan, that he said, "What should the board take away from your testimony? Would it be fair to say that, from your opinion, it would be a lack of proper screening for the Quicks?"
Yes.
Thanks.
Destruction of the- of the woodland buffer.
Thank you. Any other cross-exam questions from the public? Sir, come on up.
Nadeem Ahmed, 102 Independence Drive. Thank you for your testimony. Actually, I'll speak in the microphone. Just to clarify, you did mention there were questions around the arboviti, but that there is an alternative that's more shade tol- I'm not a tree expert by any means, so just trying to clarify that. That there is a species that would be an alternative that is more shade tolerant and more, I use a vernacular of deer resistant.
Oh, yeah, there was mention of the Green Giant arboviti, you know, which is less prone to deer browse, but still shade intolerant.
But is- is there a- are there species that as you go up the sliding scale of shade tolerance or intolerance and deer resistant and deer friendly, if I can use those terms?
I don't know if they're compatible. You know, there's, you know, hemlocks are- do okay and, you know, they're more shade tolerant than arboviti, but, you know, very prone to deer browse.
Okay. So are there, if you were doing this today, what would you recommend planting instead of arboviti?
You know, I don't know if there is a good alternative, you know. When you look at, you know, the height of screening that needs to be achieved. You know, Mrs. Quick was mentioning, you know, her vista at her second floor, you know, second-story window. And I don't know of a plant that's going to get that tall that is both shade resistant and deer resistant.
Okay. And hemlock, I think you mentioned, so where does hemlock fit, at least in the scale of the two parameters of-
Hemlocks, highly deer-browed and shade tolerant.
And shade tolerant. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other members of the public with cross-examination questions for this witness? Gates, seeing none? Okay, Mrs. Arnold, this was your witness. Do you have any other witnesses? Any other expert witnesses that you're calling? Do you have any further comments to make based on? You don't have to, but if you have any closing remarks based-
My only- my only question to-
Just your excuse, sir, because no one- you're done with examination. Thank you.
After his testimony, you would say, based on his testimony, you were going to tell the board something?
Well, yes. Well, we had, oh, I'm sorry. We had one more slide, but actually it's- been covered by a lot of what's been said, so we thought, I thought that we didn't need to show that. But I would say that, um-
Mrs. Arnold, okay, what we're going to get a problem with is, the way you're standing, you're too close to the microphone.
Oh, to the other microphone.
So you need to step back, but with the microphone in your hand, and we're, we're looking at your water bottle, too, so we, we hope it's not getting water on anything.
Could you put that down so you don't get the electronics wet? Your water bottle.
Oh, the water bottle.
Put it on the table or somewhere away.
There we go, how's that?
It looked precarious where with the electronics.
This is good now? Okay. I live near Liberty Corner School, and the trees that I have along my property line have been there, we planted them, they've been forty-five years. And I would just say that in the forty-five years, it has protected, those trees have protected me from the lights and sounds, et cetera, from Liberty Corner School, and not that we dislike the school, but it can get very noisy, and it is a great thing to have mature, large trees and bushes that have been planted and had a long time to grow to, to protect us. So I just want to add that to what we have been talking about.
Thank you, Mrs. Arnold.
Okay.
But don't go away just yet. Any questions from the board for Mrs. Arnold? Any questions from the, oh, Mr. Hagan, thank you, sir.
All right, guys. There we go. All the practice I've had on microphones, you'd never know it. Let me ask you the question. Why do, what was your, what were you hoping that Mr. Grundmann would, why was he here?
Well, I think that the Quicks are, have a buffer along their property that they have had for a long time and has protected them and has, it's been enjoyable, and, and they have had a chance to watch nature as well as everything else that goes on in the area, and now with the building being put in and trees being removed, they will lose this, and I know what it's, would be like. I know in the winter, we can see through to the school more than we could before. The trees are important, and they're big trees in a lot of cases, so that I-
You have to read, you asked Mr. Grundmann, Dave.
Yes, I think we need to hear about those trees and how important they are.
Fair enough.
Especially to my neighbors. I have five copies. Do you need to have them?
That's the PowerPoint slides?
Yes.
You, you're seeking to introduce them into evidence, Mr. Raymar? Any objection?
Can you show him the-
I didn't know you didn't have a copy.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, okay. Oh, and we also have-
Do one at a time. Let's, let's go with the PowerPoint first.
They don't have an objection to the PowerPoint.
Okay, so can you give me one copy of the PowerPoint and give Fran one copy of the PowerPoint? The Power, the PowerPoint's going to be entered into evidence by consent as Exhibit P. 12, and that is the paper copy of the PowerPoint titled ISBR Public Comment, August 18, 2015, Linda Arnold, 75 Church Street, Liberty Corner, New Jersey. Mrs. Arnold, you've had some other exhibit that you want to have-
Mr. Grundmann just gave me, it's something that-
The summary of-
A summary of what he said.
Show it to Mr. Raymar, please.
Just so you know, that, that summary was, I had Mr. Grundmann give that to you before to read, so you should have already read that.
Any objection to that coming in?
I do have, I do have an objection. But I'm not actually going to make a motion, I just want to preserve the ability to make a motion, which is, and we've had this before, unfortunately, if an expert testifies that something should be prohibited, which the township ordinance specifically permits, that's the definition of a net opinion. So parts of what Mr. Grundmann was testifying to, in terms of prohibiting construction within certain areas of the tree, to the extent that the township tree ordinance permits it, he's not allowed to give that testimony, it's net opinion.
Before we get to that issue, assuming there is no net opinion issue for the moment, do you have an objection to that summary in and of itself?
Correct, and I'm, I'm prepared just to preserve my objection and not have a-
So you're not making that motion now?
Correct. I'm just preserving it for the record.
So the exhibit will be in on consent, subject to your right to make a motion as to net opinion in the future?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's going to be Exhibit P. 13, and one copy to Fran, one copy to me, please. And Mr. Raymar, not to-
The, the objection as to the exhibit was withdrawn, there was just a reservation as the right to make a motion as to net opinion in the future. No motion is pending.
The exhibit's in evidence, subject to his reserve, as his reserving his objection.
Understood. I don't think it's appropriate that I rebut, but why should we follow the rules of evidence right now? I believe that there was a miscommunication-
There's no, there's no motion, sir. There's, there's no motion. So we, at the right time, you can come up and tell us everything you want, okay? Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Byrne. All right, now, it's my understanding that there were certain members of the public that have comments they'd like to make and that they cannot be here at the next meeting. By a show of hands, can we see who that is? Uh, the eighth, September eighth. Okay, so I have one here, the gentleman, anybody else?
Two.
Two? Three?
Four.
You can't be here? It's not that you don't want to be here, you can't- Okay, all right. So of the people that just raised their hands that they're not going to be available, does anybody have a particularly lengthy presentation, more than fifteen minutes or so? Or are these all relatively short ones? We're going to try to get everybody in, but if somebody was, if there was one of the four that was going to be an hour, you'd go last, because that's, it wouldn't be fair to knock the other three out. So, okay, the gentleman that raised his hand first, sir, come on up. And you're going to have to remind me the other three people as we go, because I'm not going to be able to recall them a little bit.
Can you write your name down on the, on the yellow sheet there? Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the comments you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help your guide?
I do.
And can you identify yourself for the record?
Michael Giordano, 54 C. 1.
And can you spell the last name?
G.I.O.R.D.A.N.O. My comments tonight will focus on the fire access plan and the way the building is laid out as it pertains to the lot from a fire pre-incident planning viewpoint. I have twenty-eight years' experience as a professional firefighter, more than half with my career in the fire service has been as a fire ground officer. I have hands-on knowledge in ladder and engine company operations as well as pre-incident planning. Primary goal of any fire department is to protect life, fire extinguishment, and property conservation. Pre-incident planning assists the fire department in a proactive approach to accomplishing those goals. My first concern is with the fire access lane, ranging from twenty feet to twenty-five feet in the immediate vicinity around the building. Twenty-foot width is used at one of the closest and tallest points to the building. Also, the edge of the fire lane should be at least ten feet off the building, where the building is more than thirty feet high. If the building became involved in fire, it would have first responders arriving on the scene, traveling right through the collapse zone. There's also the possibility of evacuating occupants exiting through this area unaware of the danger of collapse in the event of a fire. My second concern pertains to the apparatus positioning around the building, specifically the tower ladder. It's a very versatile piece of equipment to have on the fire ground, and the citizens of the township are fortunate to have this specialized piece of equipment as a first-response resource. Once in position, usually parallel to the building, the stabilizer jacks will be deployed. The jack spread ranges from thirteen feet to eighteen feet. The eighteen feet is for the maximum area that the ladder can cover, what it, to, uh, that's, for the maximum area that it can cover in range for it to operate fully next to the building. It's called the scrub area. Once the jacks are deployed, navigating around the apparatus becomes difficult and dangerous to the firefighters operating on the scene if there are vehicles trying to navigate around it. The minimum width for a fire lane around the tower ladder or water supply or aerial ladder is twenty-six feet. In order to provide safe firefighting operations and a safe protective evacuation, the width should be increased. The fire code official has the authority to require an increase in the minimum access width where they are inadequate for fire or rescue operations. In my opinion, they are inadequate and should be changed. Finally, during a fire-related incident, the most important concern is protecting the life hazard and the safe evacuation from the building. The current layout of the building with the entrance in the rear could have people who exit out the front door evacuating past the building, involved in fire, and emergency personnel operating on the scene. The safety of the firefighters and citizens they are sworn to protect should not be compromised. So I disagree with the application with the, the fire lane.
Thank you, sir. Just hold on, there might be questions for you. Any questions from the board? Okay, any questions from the professionals? Mr. Raymar?
Yeah.
Mr. Simon? Any questions from the public? Oh, that's right, yeah, okay. Thank you, sir. Your excuse, thank you. All right, who was our next person that's, yes, sir, come on up. Either the handles probably better. Yeah, why don't you sign in first before we pick it up?
My name's Dr. Umer Ahmad. I live at 28 Italian Drive in Basking Ridge.
Can you spell, what were your first and your last name?
My first name's spelled U.M.E.R., and my last name is spelled A.H.M.A.D.
Okay, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the comments and testimony that you're going to give in this proceeding will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help your guide?
Absolutely, yes. So I'm not sure, this is my first time attending, so I'm not sure if there's any guidelines I need to follow in commenting?
Did you hear the guidelines? Did you hear the guidelines that the vice chair read in the beginning of?
No, I just came in, but-
Do you have that written for?
I do.
Okay, we're, we're going to let you read it to yourself. We're going to go to somebody else, you can read it, it's not going to take you but a few minutes, and then-
Right, because I don't want to-
Yeah, no, that's fine, that's a good idea.
These are the guidelines, they're, they're two and a quarter pages. Please give these back to me after you finish reading them.
Okay, so we're going to move on to someone else in the interim. Ma'am, if you could just write your name and address, then we'll ask you to state it on the record, please. That one generally works better, thanks.
Okay, could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help your guide?
I do.
And what is your name for the record?
Sharon Vail.
And can you spell the last name?
D.E. capital F.E.O.
Spell that one more time for me.
D.E. capital F.E.O.
The F.
F. is Frank. Everybody has a problem with that.
And the address, please?
I'm sorry?
Your address?
Oh, 54 Church Street, Liberty Corner. Liberty Corner is serene, sleepy village that is rich in history. It is a type of neighborhood that requires and inspires its residents to have strong sense of stewardship. When looking for an old home, you look for a charming neighborhood, not a neighborhood where the surrounding buildings overpower the old quaint homes. The mosque leadership is viewing this property as a new site for a mosque. The rest of the community calls this home. Surrounding the proposed mosque are homes where we raise our families, relax, socialize, and live in a tranquil environment that has existed for a hundred years. These properties are also a major investment for, for all the residents. We would like to have the memories, beauty, and financial value of our homes preserved. In a prior meeting, a gentleman in support of the mosque spoke of creating history, and that is really exciting. But you do not tear down existing history to create new history. The building, the building of a mosque would be supported if it was in an appropriate location. I have lived in Liberty Corner for over twenty-eight years, and we have had to defend our corner of town against the Baptist church complex and the Presbyterian churches' tear-down of one of our historic homes. And now, a new faith-based organization files a new application, also in Liberty Corner. The same gentleman who spoke of creating history also mentioned that the tear-down of Liberty Corner Presbyterian Mans could not be compared to the building of the mosque. I believe he did not know the details of the Mans situation, similar to those who do not know the details of this situation, may assume it is religious discrimination. I feel many people read the articles in the paper, talk about it at town functions, attend a meeting, make a statement in support of the ISBR, on the basis of religious discrimination, and do not return. They also do not live in Liberty Corner and will be unaffected by the repercussions of the building. This issue has nothing to do with religion. Yes, Liberty Corner Presbyterian Church wanted to tear down the Mans and put up a building that was ten-foot taller and set back fifteen-foot deeper than the homes on Church Street, blocking all the neighbors' views similar to what the ISBR is proposing. They also wanted to pave the driveway, make the driveway larger to allow more parking, and to install commercial handicap ramps to accommodate disabled and handicapped members so they could attend meetings which be held in the building. It was to be an extension of the church. The Presbyterian church had no regard for the state, the streetscape of Liberty Corner or the residents. Once again, no one lived in Liberty Corner. From my point of view, the only difference in building the mosque is that it will be much more intrusive to the neighbors and neighborhood than the intended tearing down of the Mans and the church's construction of a new building as an extension of the church. At different times during this process, I have felt that the ISBR wanted to portray the situation as religious discrimination. Soon after we placed Preserve Liberty Corner signs in our yard, we had a visitor who came to our home identifying herself as a representative, representative of the ISBR. It was a Saturday afternoon, and neither my husband or I were home. My high school daughter was at home and answered the door. The visitor asked why we didn't want the mosque built. My daughter said she was not familiar with what she was talking about. She was confused because my daughter had assumed the Preserve Liberty Corner sign had something to do with the Presbyterian church. She told us as the Preserve Liberty Corner sign looks similar to the Save the Liberty Corner Mans sign that had previously been on our lawn. My daughter apologized to the visitor and said she couldn't help. Before the visitor left, she asked my daughter what religion, or asked my daughter what religion we were. This, to me, seemed like an odd question, since this is a dispute regarding land usage. There have been many individuals from outside of town who have come to speak on behalf of the mosque, leadership, character, and intentions. As this is a personal, as, as if this is a personal issue, but it's not, it's a land use issue, the mosque needs to build in-town in a more appropriate place, not squeezed between two private homes in a quaint section of town. This is not the correct place for any religious organization to build a house of worship. It is unfortunate, the extreme measures these faith-based organizations will go to to get what they want. I was very close to the Presbyterian's attempt to tear down the Mans. The church had claimed the home was uninhabitable. Their application was not approved, and within four months, the house sold, passed an inspection, inspection, home inspection, and had new owners. I think they misunderstood the definition of uninhabitable, as did their expert witnesses. The ISBR purchased a single-family home amongst other single-family homes and is surprised that the residents are resisting the intrusion. Call this facility what you may, but if you put up a large building, pave over the grass, and- and put lights on poles 15 feet up, I feel you have a commercial property. I have two solar balls with twinkle lights that illuminate my patio. I can only imagine how brightly these commercial lights will light up the neighbors' backyards. There is no buffer zone. The noise we have, the noise will have an enormous impact on these families. We live across the street from the Presbyterian church, so we do have a buffer. There are countless services, Sunday School, Children's Corner, early morning bus trips, late meetings, funerals, weddings, the halls are used by many community groups, and there is constant building and building repairs. People are always coming and going. I'm still unclear as to how many members currently belong to the ISBR, but this really doesn't matter as I have never known a faith-based organization that did not want to grow. The big question is how will they accommodate growth? I feel they would use the method the Presbyterian churches use, purchase the homes around them to enlarge the footprint. The faith-based organizations are trying to change the face of Liberty Corner. If things keep progressing in this direction, they will be Liberty Corner. The residents need to be represented. When we moved to Liberty Corner, we knew we were moving across the street from the school and the church, but we did not think that a residential home would be changed to accommodate a large commercial building such as the mosque. We need this board to protect the integrity of our neighborhood as outlined in the master plan. It has been difficult to watch and defend the neighborhood with each application from these faith-based organizations, but what is more unsettling is the extent they'll go to get their way. It's sad, but all these faith-based organizations are extremely myopic in their vision and approach. The only communities these organizations care about are their members. The common thread amongst the ISBR, the Presbyterian church, and the Baptist church was all three religious organizations were not concerned with the neighbors. They wanted to move forward with their projects no matter how inconsiderate, disruptive, and unfair it was to the neighborhood. They all have gotten caught up in achieving their goal. I feel they lost sight between right and wrong. These religious organizations have far more resources than the individual residents. The neighborhood is weary from defending another attempt of a religious organization to use property in an inappropriate manner. We are asking for our land use boards to use whatever zoning laws of our town that are available to preserve our neighborhood against the latest intrusion. Based upon the master plan, Burness Township is dedicated to the goal of protecting neighborhoods and community character and to retain and improve the attractive streetscapes throughout the township. To protect land use policies, we adopted plans to strive to maintain and enhance community character, protect the integrity of existing neighborhoods, and prevent the intrusion of incompatible new development. I feel none of the faith-based organizations have asked themselves how their decisions are affecting the neighborhood because none of them live in Liberty Corner, and most of them in these organizations do not even live in town. Soon, there will be no residents left in Liberty Corner. The faith-based organizations will squeeze us out one by one. Take a moment to ask yourself, how would it feel to have this facility wedged next to your home regardless of whether you were opposed or in favor of this action? I'm certain you will get a knot in your stomach. The Baptist church and the Presbyterian church were not successful in their attempt to disrupt the neighborhood. Please make the correct choice, Preserve Liberty Corner.
Yes, sir. You've had an opportunity now to read the guidelines. Okay, let's start again, your name.
Dr. Umer Ahmad, U-M-E-R, A-H-M-A-D.
I'm so sorry.
And you already wrote your name down there on the evidence?
Yes, I did.
And I already swore you in it, correct?
Yes, you did.
Okay, go ahead.
So, I want to introduce myself. First of all, I'm a physician. I just recently moved to Basking Ridge. I've been here since June. I've lived most of my life in New Jersey. I grew up in Parsippany. The last seven years, I was in Louisiana. And I just moved back to Basking Ridge. I chose Basking Ridge because it's a beautiful town. It's got great schools, presumably wonderful people, and I basically wanted to come here, you know, for what Basking Ridge is. So when I saw these Preserve Liberty Corner signs, I had no idea what they were about. I didn't know what they were about till, I think, probably a week and a half ago or two weeks ago. And I'd been listening to, you know, when I go to the mosque, Dr. Chodri had been mentioning there's these hearings, we need to, you know, that people are concerned about the building of the mosque, and finally put two and two together and I realized there was...
Your side. Calling Dr. Chodri.
Oh, I apologize, I'll just talk about myself. But basically...
One second.
Okay. I tried to read the guidelines.
I understand.
Stick to the guidelines.
Yep. This is a land use issue, like...
Absolutely.
The person before you testified, so if you could focus your comments on land use issues...
Absolutely.
Why this should be, obviously you're in favor of it.
I'm in favor of the mosque being built.
So if you're in favor of it, give, why it should be approved based on the land use, based on the ordinance, et cetera. Well, that's my advice to the board.
And we will adopt that advice.
Land use issues.
Yeah, keep it to the land use issues, please.
I appreciate it. So, going to the land use issues, I think the most important thing, we as good Muslims and good community members and civic members of the society here should be able to do is abide by the laws, regulations, ordinances that Basking Ridge provides for its citizens. So I think if we are following the ordinances as they've been given and provided, and we are following the rules and regulations, that in and of itself should allow for the mosque to be built. I've heard concerns about the trees, and I do care about trees as well. I think being environmentally conscious is important, but I want those rules that apply to trees by Basking Ridge ordinances to be followed, absolutely. And if they're being followed, I think we ought to be allowed to build a mosque. It's a sensitive issue for us as Muslims. If people are objecting to mosques, you may or may not be aware that that's happening all across the country, so...
But that, I got it.
So, my...
Just listen to the chairman.
That's really not relevant to the application. I think everybody either for or against the application would be willing to state on the record that this is not an issue of religion, religious liberty, anything other than compliance with the land use ordinance. Now, you started to make an argument concerning that if there is compliance, perhaps your comments should be focused on how the application does comply with the ordinances.
So, you know, as far as how far back the building should be, that ought to comply, you know, as far as, you know, how far it should be away from the neighbor's property, that should comply. These are the kinds of things that if the architect or the ISBR is not complying with, there could be an issue. But whether, you know, trees are going to be damaged and it's not something that's in the ordinance, then it seems to me that that's an extra issue that's being added post facto, post the application of this particular request to the board. So, my hope is that as board members, you all will just follow Basking Ridge rules, laws, regulations. Of course, the most important thing is, I mean, some of the comments have been about the fact that we want to gain more land. I don't know where that has come in in the application. I think the application is very specific to this property. There's no request to acquire more land or on one side or the other, and, you know, I don't anticipate there to be a request ever to do that, but really, are they asking us to say that we won't expand and buy more land? Because I don't know that there's any legal way to do that, but it's really just one property in Basking Ridge, in Liberty Corner, which is not just that property. Liberty Corner, of course, is a beautiful area, I drive through it quite often, but it's not that one property, it's not some... To me, it almost seems like it's a, this property's gonna scar or mar the beauty of Liberty Corner, and I can't imagine how a beautiful property would do that. And also, there's been some concerns about noise. I wasn't sure, you know, every mosque I've been to have been extremely quiet. I mean, the kids run around, but that's inside, you don't really hear it outside. As far as people going in and out, I mean, most times the mosque doesn't have many people, probably just one time a week. If you're familiar with religious rituals, you know, most people don't go that often to religious sites sometimes. So, you know, this idea that it's going to draw people and the bucolic setting will be somehow damaged because of this increasing traffic, well, I know that's not an issue but here, but that the bucolic setting will somehow be affected in a negative way by this mosque, I personally just want to say, I don't, I can't imagine that to be true. I really can't. Is the building gonna be a little more modern? I haven't, you know, specifically analyzed the architecture, but I imagine...
The witness is trying to testify as an expert. He's admitted he's not qualified in anything he's talking about. He doesn't know...
He's just offering public comment on the application.
I admit that I'm not an expert.
Just address us. Just address us.
Yes, sir. I'm just, I just want to give my opinion. I'm not saying I'm an expert, sir. I'm just saying that I want you to hear that, you know, I think the most important thing, and I'll just end with that, is that, you know, I have three children, I want them to have a place to learn to be good citizens, good Muslims, good people, and this is an option for us, and I would like the opportunity for us to have that in Basking Ridge. And I hope you'll take that into account, and I appreciate you listening to my comments. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, there was somebody else who indicated that they couldn't be here. No, he was just giving comments.
This is public comment, like everyone else.
Who else indicated they couldn't be here on... Yes, sir, come on up. Okay, as he's coming forward, is there anyone else that truly cannot be here at the next meeting?
Which is September 8th.
September 8th. Just because we're trying to avoid people missing out on their chance to be heard. Okay, seeing, let the record reflect, no one else is indicating they can't be here next meeting.
Okay, did you write your name and address down on the yellow sheet? Can you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys?
Thank you.
Can you identify yourself?
Mohammed El Sayed, and I live in 401 Penns Way. Do you need me to spell the name?
Yeah, I need you to spell your last name.
Sure. It's E-L-S-A-Y-E-D.
Okay, 401 Penns Way, Basking Ridge. You're on.
Okay. Well, first of all, I would like to thank ladies and gentlemen of the board for hearing all these comments. I know I've been coming to these meetings for a long time. It's not easy just sitting there and listening to this. And I would also like to thank, I didn't catch your name, but the lady who just testified before that, I really appreciate that testimony, that, in my opinion, was the most heartfelt testimony from the opposition I've heard since coming to these meetings. I did, my statement will be very brief, I'm not an expert on anything that has to do with specific logistics of the plan, but I would just like to share a bit of, you know, my experience that is relevant to this, I don't want to go on for too long. Just about me personally, I am a Ridge High alumnus, I've been at Ridge for about three years, I moved here when I was a sophomore, recent Seton Hall graduate, and I'm on my way to New York Chiropractic College in the fall. I would just like to, I mean, I fully understand all the concerns of the opposition, whether they be logistical, ideological, whatever it is, I have no jurisdiction as to say whether or not, you know, I can't rule on the reasons, is what I'm saying. And I would just, I wanted to speak about, like I said, my own personal experience. I've heard from the lady who I just testified, I didn't catch her name again, that faith-based organizations don't care, I believe, I couldn't be paraphrasing, about people outside of their, you know, who they service, but I would really, I mean, I was saddened to hear that because that's really, from my honest experience, it's not true. I taught at the Sunday School for ISBR, and we had a fundraiser for the Bedminister First Aid Squad. We had all the kids collect whatever money they could, and the parents, and they came and did a presentation on all the training, everything they did, and we're also forming a boy, or just a scout group for the children. So we're very active and involve citizens in the community. I wish, you know, I could convey that, that we're not just servicing Muslims, we're really benefiting non-Muslims. I ensured that as much as I could as being part of the organization, which is why I think, you know, we brought up, certainly there's been a lot of negatives brought up to the property and where it is, but I would just at least like to point out some of the positives that I think will come, is a broadened base for interfaith events, which I've been a part of and I've loved. All religions are equally represented. More efficient community service because where we are, we're basically renting the community space that we pray, I forget the address, but we're not really, you know, we don't have a strong base to do any of that, but we still do as much community service as we can. So an expanded mosque will make an expanded base for that. And finally, as I've mentioned, the Bedminister First Aid Squad, we have an expanded base for fundraising for these important town organizations. We're not, you know, fundraising for anything outside of the country or like, you know, Palestine or any of those, you know, quote unquote Muslim concerns. We're really local, we're fundraising for everything town-involved, and we want to be productive citizens as best as we can. So I would really, I mean, that's as far as my experiences would, I've never gone to ISBR and felt that, oh, I'm just in a Muslim mosque, isolated from the rest of the community around us, that's certainly not the case. As I said, I went to Seton Hall, a Catholic organization, and, you know, I've loved every chance I get to be involved in interfaith events, and ISBR has only continued that tradition and expanded it. So I would really, these are just my experiences. And before I conclude, I would just, this is more related to the site plan, I apologize that I've gone too long for things that are unrelated to the site plan. I just want to make two corrections that I've heard so far. A member of the public at a previous meeting suggested that Muslims cannot enter the prayer hall with shoes on. That statement is not entirely accurate. We can't enter the prayer hall with our shoes on, we just have to take our shoes off before we step into the prayer rug area inside the prayer hall. So in other words, we're entering the hall, there are shelves or boxes or something that we can put our shoes in, and then we enter, there's a separate prayer area in which we cannot have our shoes on. So I think the concern was that we'd have to go around and use the wudu or ablution area, but that really will not be the case.
I'm terribly sorry because I'm personally enjoying what you're saying. It's heartfelt and I appreciate it.
I have to object. Again, my name is Paul Whitty. The previous testimony that you're referring to was in fact objected to by Mr. Raymar because it lacked foundation.
Sure.
I believe that testimony was based upon a book that was taken out of the library, and the entire discussion of whether or not shoes were mandatory was...
But there has been some testimony concerning the viability of the plan relative to the location of the wudu room versus the designated public entrance. Some of what was offered by way of content from the internet was excluded, there was other content, I think attributed to the applicant that was permitted. So given that prior testimony, it's fair grounds for another member of the public to want to rebut what was said.
And I understand that.
So the objections are overruled.
I want to place the objection on the record that the previous testimony was objected to by Mr. Raymar. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, that was my first correction. And the second one, this was a while back, I don't even remember who brought this up, but it was about, basically, the nature of, what do we do with ablution, which is ritual watching the four prayers, it's arms, head, and feet, something.
I'm sorry as well, but Mr. Chairman, we talked about whether there was no religious expert testimony. If the witness is not being offered as a religious expert, then it's really outside the scope of, you know, the capacity of his testimony.
He's a member of the public, he's identified himself as a member of the Muslim community, and he's, and a practicing member, and he's just relating his... and he's, and a practicing member, and he's just relating his personal experience as it pertains to other testimony that's been given. So it's, you are starting to get to the point where I can't see the relevance. So if you could tie it in, I'd appreciate that. But we're going to allow it for now?
Sure. The, the concern was that due to the nature of this wudu being broken by going to the bathroom or normal biological functions, and this would be an exaggeration of, this would make the percentage, that 10% of people would only need to use the wudu area to be inaccurate. I would just like to counter with my experience, just on average. I would leave my home to go to prayers here at 1:15. And the prayers conclude here about 1:55, 2 max. And that's not counting people who have to come from work or whatever. But the earliest I've ever seen anyone arrive to the prayer area is 1:00, maybe 12:55. So we're talking about a span of maybe at max one hour or one hour and 15 minutes of holding biological functions to be, to be, you know, not blunt.
I think what the pattern's becoming is that the applicant, I mean, they didn't have enough evidence on the direct case. It's trying to bring witnesses as cloaked in the public when really they're trying to, they're really trying to fix their direct case that was insufficient.
Do you have proof of that, Mr. Bar? Do you have proof that this witness, that this member of the public who's a resident of the town that's giving his testimony is here at the direction of the ISBR?
Well, he said he's a member of it, right?
Yeah.
He participates. And he's trying, he said he was trying to elaborate on some of this, the earlier testimony. It really was their own direct case.
Okay. Well, your objection, your objection's overruled for the same reason, don't go away. For the same reason I overruled Mr. Raymar's objection when the testimony suggested that Mr. Smith paid for Mrs. Arnold's witness. None of that has anything to do with it. Everyone has their voice. Everyone has their right to be heard. And the fact that he happens to be, he's not a member of the, the management or the hierarchy of the ISBR that is represented by council. He's just a member of the public like you are.
My man, I just had a very short point to that. I just wanted to dispel the concern that we would require a higher number than 10% of our members to use the wudu room due to the nature of wudu. What I'm saying is that realistically, that's not a hard goal to maintain, is to hold your biological functions for an hour or so. So I'm just making the case that 10% is in fact, could be a reasonable expectation for people to use the wudu room. So just in conclusion, I urge the board to approve the project. And I urge the members of the public who, even if they're still opposed, I'd just like to at least approach this like the previous testimony with an open heart and an open mind in it. So that's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. You got any cross for anybody to cross?
Simon, you have a question?
What's that?
Yeah. Any cross?
I have no cross.
Okay. All right. In light of the hour, we're gonna, and the fact that we've hit all the people that are going to be absent the next meeting, we're going to adjourn for this evening. Our next meeting is September 8th, 2000.
Do we know how many people still want to speak?
Fifteen.
It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter.
All right. There will be no further notice?
We don't need any dates?
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, as you're, as you're exiting the room, we do have to conclude other business. So if you could make your best effort at being put-
You can hear better than me?
Okay.
Because I don't know what we're doing in the room.
Yeah, we are.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you're not going to be participating in the remainder of the meeting, could you please just exit quickly and quietly? We have other business we have to get to. All right. So members, comments from, from staff. Fran, I know you wanted to discuss, we did some polling on special meeting dates in September.
Yes.
Fran, speak loud because there are a lot of people in the room that are still talking.
After the last meeting, I did a poll of our staff members as well as our board members. And we came up with two possible dates, one of which unfortunately affects one of our board members, but it is September 16th, which I believe is a Wednesday. Fits everybody else's schedule. If, okay, that is, that, okay, that is, that is, the room is available on that date. Do I need to be any louder? Okay.
September 16th. Does any, my only final reservation that I didn't check on because I didn't think of it, given the fact that we're in the middle of the summer. Does anybody know if that's going to be a back-to-school night? Or it sounds kind of early, but-
Let's just ask Mr. Raymar and Mr. Simon if September 16th for a special meeting poses a problem.
That's fine.
I would have to check my calendar. I do not know tonight. I can check and get back to the board very quick.
We didn't circulate it, all right? Didn't we circulate it?
Fran, didn't we circulate it to these guys?
Was that, was that the day?
Yeah. The 16th and the 30th.
Not a new date.
It was not made clear today.
Okay. Yeah, that was one of the dates we gave you.
If I had cleared it, I'm a man of my word.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So we're going to add a special meeting date for this application for September 16th. Therefore, we have September 8th, the entire meeting. We have September 16th, the entire meeting. And then we have November 3, the entire meeting. And we're hoping that the way things progress, that the closings will be delivered either September 8 or September 16th, if we finish all the other public-
Not, not September 8.
I'm sorry.
Not likely.
Not likely.
Anything, anything can happen, but not likely.
Yeah, but I don't want, I don't want anyone to say that based on something we said, they didn't have to be prepared. September 8th or September 16th, most likely, not September 8th. And then we're hoping then that will give the board a month off so they can then deliberate on November 3. The applicant has extended to November 30th, and we play by year, and we'll see what happens when we get around to November 3.
Have we not moved the meeting on the 22nd to the 24th for the October board?
Yes, we do.
We discussed that, but we didn't end up with the 24th meeting.
We did not end up, okay.
So we don't have another meeting. So it's gonna, it's gonna be the 8th and the 16th and no other meetings in September, right?
Correct. And remember, the 24th is not a Tuesday. It is a Thursday.
I understand, but to answer his question-
But there is no meeting on the 24th.
Well, we have one on the calendar, actually.
I have one on the 24th.
For Fellowship Senior Living. Is that a scheduled meeting now?
I thought there were three meetings in September.
Yeah. So that wasn't the right answer. We did, we do have one, but it's not for this applicant.
Not for this applicant. It's for Fellowship Village.
Okay.
I'm just worried about meetings in general, so I don't-
Yeah, you're right. It was, we did, we did say the 24th.
In other words, we do have three meetings, one on the 8th, one on the 16th, one on the 24th.
Correct. And just to make the record clear, for this application, we have September 8th and September 16th. Okay. So now, we already announced there's no need for further notice. That's the schedule.
Well, given the fact that a number of people have left, we will make another announcement on the 8th.
Yeah.
If Fran, you could just make a note of that, that we're going to be sure to-
Also, we can get to it, but I sent the note to you and to Fran about the two Quick PowerPoints.
Correct. Can you quickly see if the Quick, one of the Quick's is out in the hall? Because-
Well, we're looking for that. Any comments from members?
It appears that Oak Street has a back-to-school night on the 16th.
Oak, Oak Street only?
I'm trying to post her on my phone.
Is your husband out there? It's his PowerPoints.
He might be. He's, he's down there.
So put it this way, Mr. Raymar, is there an objection now to putting the two Christopher Quick PowerPoints, the ISBR Drainage Analysis Public Comment PowerPoint by Christopher Quick, and the ISBR Tree Analysis Public Comment PowerPoint dated August 4, 2015 by Christopher Quick?
Not beyond a specific objections we had placed on the record at the time.
Okay. So we're going to move in by consent. And this is Quick. You can tell Mr. Quick when you see him later that you took care of some business for him while he was out talking.
Once I see him later.
So we're going to put in by consent P14. Which one, just remind me, which one went first, drainage or tree?
Drainage.
Drainage went first. So the drainage-
Tree went first.
And right, tree's going first. So the tree PowerPoint is P14, and the drainage analysis PowerPoint is P15.
Mr. Drill, we made, we made a couple of specific points in not objecting. So can our letter also be part of the record?
Can you, why don't you just read it? It's short.
Ms. Florio, as you know, it was very difficult for us to obtain a copy of Mr. Quick's Drainage Analysis. For some reason, he forced-
Get that microphone.
Mr. Rayman, I can't hear you at all, so I don't know what you're saying. I'll have to start it again. I'm sorry. As you know, it was very difficult for us to obtain a copy of Mr. Quick's Drainage Analysis. For some reason, he forced us to get it from the township. Now that we have both PowerPoints, we respond to their request to move them into evidence as follows. Excuse me. One, Mr. Quick's 53-page PowerPoint entitled "ISBR Drainage Analysis." We do not object to the entry of this document into evidence subject to the objections we made during the course of Mr. Quick's presentation of the same at the August 4, 2015 board meeting. We specifically noted on the record Mr. Quick's lack of qualifications to select and discuss accurately the data he presented. Please note that our lack of other objection should not be viewed as an admission that this document accurately represents any details of ISBR site plan or stormwater management report, or that its recitation of certain stormwater management regulations is relevant to ISBR site plan application. Two, Mr. Quick's 20-page PowerPoint entitled "ISBR Tree Analysis." We do not object to the entry of this document into evidence subject to the objections we made during the course of Mr. Quick's discussion of trees on the ISBR property at the August 4, 2015 board meeting. Again, we specifically noted on the record Mr. Quick's lack of qualifications. Please note that our lack of other objection should not be viewed as an admission that this document accurately represents any details of ISBR site plan, or that its recitation of any external sources is relevant to ISBR site plan application. Thank you.
What is the date on that email?
August 17th, 2015.
Fran, when you do the minutes, can you please reprint verbatim when Mr. Raymar's comments here? Just put in the minutes verbatim that email, okay? Fran?
Fran also has a true copy of it. When did, I'm just out of curiosity, when did you send this email? 6:16 PM on August 17th. 8:15? 6:16.
After you left the office.
After I left the office, thank you.
Yeah, that's why you didn't see it. I've seen it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. So any other comments from members? Mr. Hagan?
You refer at the beginning of the meeting to, or Mr. Drill, refer at the beginning of the meeting to a series of emails that were placed today. Is there anything in there that we should be aware of?
No. I mean, if you want to see them, I'll-
Did it relate only to whether we should start this application, the ISBR application, at 7:30 when we previously indicated it would probably start at 9:00 PM unless the Bell application dropped off, which it in fact did?
Right. And it was an argument between various attorneys. Bell pulled out at 11:30 AM this morning, okay? And so there was an argument that it shouldn't have started at 7:30, not start until 9:00. So Mr. Simon had the last word on it, but we still started at 7:30.
They're in the, they're in the file if you like, Fran. We'll send them to you.
Do you want to see them?
PMI.
Comments from other members?
They're part of the record.
Microphone.
Hey, wait a second. Simon, your application's over for today.
Oh, no.
Yeah, we're on comments from members, man. You're, you're out of order. What do you got?
I'm just saying as a part, as all those emails are part of the record, I encourage the board members to review them just like they review the rest of the evidence. Thank you.
But you're not suggesting the revidentiary, are you?
I'm suggesting-
You know what? If you are, you can address it in your closing.
Thanks. All right. Any other comments from members now? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ms. Albert. Seconded by Mr. Hagan. All in favor? Aye. No opposed? No? We're carrying. We're adjourned.